Go ahead and get started. And first of all, I just wanted to welcome everybody. And another incredible day in paradise here. And thank God for another sunny, sunny day. We have a lot going on today at the meeting. And I'm so glad some of you have been able to come here in person. And we also have some folks that are online that are going to weigh in. And we are going to start with an invocation by Reverend Clarence Williams of the Greater Mount Zion AME Church in St. Petersburg. And he's in the house, but online with us this afternoon. It's great to have you past, Reverend. And it's welcome as always. You're always here for us at least a couple of times a year. So it's great to have you this afternoon. And we'll start with your invocation. And then Commissioner Gerard will lead us in the pledge. Please. Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let us look to Godfather. We're thankful and grateful for your loving kindness, your tender mercy. Thank you, oh God, for this great nation, for the power, justice, and freedom that it represents. We pray your blessings now on those that are administering the vaccine for the virus. Thank you, oh God, for allowing us to be able to contain and eradicate this virus. Thank you for our country. Thank you for the members of this chamber, the families from which they come. We pray, oh God, as they have allowed themselves, made themselves available for public service, that you will protect them and guide them in their deliberations. And we pray that their commitment, passion to our community and to our society will reap wonderful benefits for the citizens that they have committed themselves to. We pray, oh God, that you will protect us and defend us from the enemies of democracy, the enemies of our nation and our country. We pray, oh God, that you will guide us, keep us, and protect us, that armed with thy powerful hand, that we will be able to establish your justice in this nation and the world. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you again for being here this afternoon. And you're welcome to stay with us if you'd like.
I'm going to stay about 30 seconds. I just want to continue to encourage the council and the commissioners to keep up the very important and good work that you're doing. God bless.
Thank you, Reverend. This afternoon, we do have a couple of presentations, awards, if you will, a proclamation. First one will be for Florida Surveyors and Mappers Week. And I'd like to have Jared Phillips, professional surveyor and mapper, and Susan Schalp, excuse me, for Division Director, both from the Surveying and Mapping Division of Public Works to come on up. And they'll be accepting the Florida Surveyors and Mappers Week proclamation on behalf of our residents. Hello there. Welcome.
Good to have you.
Surveyors and mappers are counted among the founding leaders of our country and were instrumental in the formation of the layout of property boundaries in the United States, which have provided our citizens the enjoyment of property ownership. George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, and other former presidents of the United States serve their fellow colonists as surveyors. The citizens of Pinellas County recognize the valuable contributions of the surveying and mapping profession to history, development, and quality of life in Florida and the United States of America, and make important decisions based on the knowledge and expertise of licensed surveyors and mappers. The Florida Surveying and Mapping Society's Tampa Bay chapter and at least 92 active Florida licensed professional surveyors and mappers and 30 Florida licensed surveying and mapping businesses are located right here in Pinellas County. The surveying and mapping profession requires special education, training, the knowledge of mathematics, the related physical and applied sciences, and requirements of law for evidence. I think, again, encouraging our STEM education, folks, for your profession. Surveyors and mappers are uniquely qualified and licensed to determine and describe land and boundaries, water boundaries, for the management of natural resources and protection of private and public property rights. And the continued advancements in instrumentation have required the surveyor or mapper not only to be able to understand and implement the methods of the past, but also to learn and employ modern technology in finding solution to meet the challenges of the future. So now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that the week of March 21st and through the 27th of 2021 will be recognized as Florida Surveyors and Mappers Week. And I will tell you, I had one class in college, and this was years ago. I probably wouldn't even recognize the instrumentation that you have today. My problem was always about precision. You know, you have to be precise in your profession. But certainly enjoyed the class, and I wanted to welcome you and to come on over here, if you will. Going to get pictures. Kim? Give pictures, please. You guys will hold that. Move up here, please.
I'm sorry. I don't know why.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah.
Please. Yes, absolutely. You each can, you each, no, no problem. Please.
So, thank you, Commissioner Eggers and members of the board and Administrator Burton, of course. I wanted to thank you for recognizing the vital role that professional surveyors and mappers play in both governmental projects, governmental issues and programs, as well as private development, as well as Jared Phillips and I, who work for Pinellas County Survey and Mapping, also attending virtually, are Penny Simone, Shirley Zeller, Jim Neal, and some private surveyors as well, who are normally here in attendance. I feel like this is our annual little meeting with you here. So I'd like to recognize Jim Acker, Kathy Bosco, Chris McLaughlin, and other members of the Florida Survey and Mapping Society. As Commissioner Eggers said, the education and experience to become a professional surveyor and mapper in the state of Florida is vital to the profession and to the protection of the public in general. Most people's most valuable asset is their property, and that's an inalienable right in to own property but not know where the boundaries or what the elevations are. So you can plan for sea level rise, flood insurance, whatever, without having a professional to help you make the right decisions would be just horrible to that right. As Commissioner Eggers said, it's a STEM-based profession. And to become a professional in Florida, you need a four-years geomatics degree and four years working directly under a professional. And it's all about STEM. And Jared would like to just say a few brief sentences about what we as your Pinellas County Survey and Mapping Team do for the county.
So, yeah, we like to say we're involved from concept to concrete. It's kind of one of our slogans. So from the property research that's done in the initial planning phases of a project to the mapping of the, all the relevant built natural features and the precise locations of property boundaries, to the plan review and layout of the, during construction and as-built of the newly constructed features that can be used later for maintenance and operations. So we do take our responsibility seriously and appreciate the recognition today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our second item is, our second proclamation, I guess, is Water Matters Month proclamation. I'd like to ask Alexandra Maurer, an Environmental Specialist 2, from the Environmental Management Division in the Public Works Department, and Robert Kachinko, an Electronic Equipment Technician 3, from the Plant Operations Division in the Utilities Department, to join me here at the podium. Hi there. Welcome. Good to see you. Water resources keep our communities healthy, our cities running, and our economies growing. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Southwest Florida Water Management District, which will be joining us for a presentation here shortly, Tampa Bay Water, the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, and Pinellas County work together continuously to preserve, protect, and promote water resources and the value of water in our region. Pinellas County supports the planning and rehabilitation of critical water sources, resources, infrastructure, including drinking water, wastewater, reclaimed water, storm water, and surface water for the continued protection of public health and the environment. Pinellas County recognizes that a trained and skilled workforce to support the operation and maintenance of water resources, resource facilities is critical to the future needs of Pinellas County citizens and visitors. Every business, industry, homeowner, and visitor can make a difference when it comes to preserving, protecting, and promoting our vital water resources. Pinellas County citizens have managed to reduce their personal daily consumption of potable water from 153 gallons in 1990 to 74 gallons in 2020. And I just can't, that's a hard number to fathom, really, cutting it in half. A lot had to do with reclaimed use, et cetera, but just amazing progress. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that April 2021 be recognized as Water Matters Month in Pinellas County, and all residents and businesses are urged to help protect our precious water resources by practicing conservation. So, here we go. Congratulations for both of you. Come on over here. Get a couple of pictures. And I'll let you guys say a few words right up here. Hold on. Excuse me. Yep. Mask on. Sorry about that. Okay. Got it? You guys take a few minutes?
Sure. I'd like to just speak to the mission statement of the division that I'm in, which is Environmental Management. Our mission is to protect the natural resources of Pinellas County, and we do that through continually monitoring and assessing resources. We implement restoration when possible, and we enforce current regulations. So we'd like to, we're happy to accept this on behalf of the employees within utilities and public works who make that possible.
And I'm Bob Kacinko. I work out of the Keller Water Treatment Plant. And I'd like to thank the county for supporting us. As we move forward and move up, we are upgrading our infrastructure. We are presently completing a massive multimillion-dollar project at our Capri Isle Water Booster Station down in Treasure Island. This has upgraded all our equipment. We are going to save both electricity power and also better treat our water for our southern counties from that point forward. And also, we have brand-new water analyzers that are just starting to come online. We just started to put them online yesterday. They're brand-new, state-of-the-art. They'll be able to monitor the water and give us more quality, better readings, and more accuracy. So we thank you very much for your support.
And I, as you, as you all may know, we all sit on various boards. We have many other responsibilities. And one of the boards that I get to sit on is the Tampa Bay Water. And I really, it's a real honor for me to be there and work closely with Pinellas County Utilities. And Commissioner Peters just joins me on that board as well. And just, it's really amazing what you learn about the production of water, something that's so simple but so, so complex. And again, a STEM-demanding education for many positions within that organization. So thank you for those, for the professionals that bring us water every day. Speaking of a partner, a new, a current partner, an old partner, a partner going well into the future with us, I'd like to call up Amanda Rice. And Mandy has been the Assistant Executive Director of Southwest Florida Water Management District since 2016. She oversees the day-to-day operations of the district's five divisions, resource management, regulation, management services, employee and external relations and operations, land and resource monitoring. Before joining the district, Mandy worked at Tampa Bay Water, Florida's largest wholesale water supplier for 18 years in various positions. She earned her bachelor's and master's degree in civil engineering from the University of South Florida. Go bold. She's a licensed professional engineer. Just really want to thank you so much for being here and welcome. Mandy?
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you today. I really appreciate the invitation. All right. So the district, these are areas of responsibility. We are a special district of the state, same format as Tampa Bay Water, same type of entity. And we need to stick within these areas of responsibility for everything that we do and everything that we fund. And it's of note that this is our 60th anniversary this year. We, we were formed in 1961 as the local sponsor for the Four River Basin's flood protection suite of projects. So we were actually the first district formed out of the five located in the state of Florida. So this is the boundary of our district. And you can see we're all are part of 16 counties, 10,000 square miles. Our population within that boundary is 6 million people. Our current year budget is $183 million. And about half of that every year, this year it happens to be 56%, is spent on projects. Our major funding source is Ad Valorem Collections. This year, it happens to be $116 million. And you can see our millage rate there. So for that graphic, you can see that there are some areas that are shaded. Those are water use caution areas. So about two-thirds of our district is within water use caution areas, and that drives a lot of the decisions that we make. Those are areas where the water resources are strained due to the over-pumping of groundwater. So we just finished, every five years, we need to do a regional water supply plan. That's statutorily required. And we just finished that last year in 2020. So that's our most recent, very up-to-date data. Our projections for how much our water use is going to grow within our, within our district over the next 20 years, so 2020-2040, is 210 million gallons per day. 70% of that, or 145 MGD, is expected to be for public supply. So if you look at a different sort of pie graph that shows different water use types, public supply is a little over half of the water use types, type in our district. It didn't, used to be. That used to be agriculture. But now it is public supply, and that public supply component is only growing as agricultural lands get converted to other uses. So that is why our district and our board has really focused on water supply projects or development of alternative water supplies. So one thing I really wanted to celebrate with you all for a few minutes is the Northern Tampa Bay recovery. This is a really big deal. Back in 1998, a water use caution area was put together for the Tampa Bay area. It's basically that map shown in green. And also, we had a recovery strategy put in rule at the same time. And 124 lakes and wetlands in the area had MFLs, or Minimum Flows and Levels, set for them. That became our measure of determining how recovery was progressing. Also, just of note, in 1998, that's when I started with Tampa Bay Water. So I was lucky enough to live through all of this development. Actually, I was hired by West Coast Regional Water Supply Authority. So I got to see everything that progressed from this point, and I can tell you, it was an amazing experience. So in 1998, the other thing that occurred was the district entered into the partnership agreement with the member governments of Tampa Bay Water. And the district supplied $183 million to help with the development of 85 million gallons per day of alternative water supplies. And the pumping from those 11 regional wellfields where the environmental damage was occurring got cut from about 160 million gallons per day down to 90. Those 11 wellfields were put under one consolidated water use permit. That water use permit actually was submitted to the district in January, and we're reviewing it now. We've been working with the staff of Tampa Bay Water for years on the analysis of the degree to which that area has recovered. And we can tell you that significant recovery has occurred. And in just two weeks from today, we're asking our governing board to repeal the portion of the rule that contained the recovery strategy. So congratulations to Pinellas County for your part in that environmental recovery. That's an amazing, amazing partners that you've been in terms of your per capita water use and the projects that you guys have implemented here, all of the reclaimed water projects and so forth, conservation. So our strategic plan, this is our board's document. This is updated every year. It's a five-year look ahead, and it's basically who we are and what we do. And it also sets our board's priorities for us as staff to know where we need to focus our resources. So there's kind of two components in the plan. One is our overall strategic initiatives, which are listed there. They are grouped by our areas of responsibility, our statutorily defined areas of responsibility. And then we actually have separately priorities for each of our four regions. We've separated our district into four regions. And what's really important about that strategic plan is it's used very heavily in the evaluation of cooperative funding applications that come in for, for our governing board to consider. So any projects that come in need to align with strategic initiatives, and it's even better if they align with our regional priorities as well. So you can see in the Tampa Bay region, we've got recovery, recovery strategies, implement the MFL recovery strategies, improve some water bodies that are listed there. Also, flood protection is a really big deal. In your region, in the Tampa Bay area, we've got some very large and very expensive flood control projects going on right now with Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa. And then we have water supply, which really would fall under that implement recovery strategy. So I'm going to be talking mostly about that for the rest of the couple of slides here. Every year, we have a workshop, and we project for our board what we believe is coming to them on the horizon for large expenditures. For the last two workshops, we've really focused on water supply projects. And this is the results. These are the confirmations of our board, and you can see that one of them is to assist Tampa Bay Water with the development of 20 MGD of alternative water supplies. So one thing that is really important for how our board funds alternative water supply projects is included in the board's cooperative funding initiative policy. And they limit the, the funding of alternative water supply projects to regional entities only. That can be multi-jurisdictional or regional water supply authorities. And there's a lot of benefits to that. So we really have, our board has two tools in their toolbox. One is our regulatory program, and one is our cooperative funding program. The regulatory program is very rule-based. So when, our ability to issue permits is really based on a very strict set of rules and the order in which the applications come in and the existing legal users. Whereas our funding program, our board can be a little bit more focused. Whereas our funding program, our board can be a little bit more focused in terms of incentivizing the direction they want things to go. And that's why they focus on regional entities for alternative water supply funding. There is a lot of benefits to us and there's a lot of benefits to the region. So, it's more cost-effective due to efficiencies gained from the larger projects. And there's some planning, planning benefits to us and there's some regulatory benefits to us as well. So, when you get a group of member governments sitting at the, at the table, making the decisions and saying, "This is where, the direction we're going to go," and then they come into the district for funding and permits, it's a very different situation than those individual members coming in individually for permits and us needing to apply those same rules that apply to all, all water use. So, this is a table that was shown to our board at their last workshop, which just occurred in December. And this is our staff's take on trying to give them an understanding of what their water supply spending is going to look like over the next 20 years. So, you can see there that we do have Tampa Bay Water listed. That is our best guess, working very closely with Tampa Bay Water staff on what the cost might be over the next 20-year period for the projects that Tampa Bay Water is going to implement. You can see in that district cost column, if you total those up, we're looking at about a $900 million investment by the district over the next 20 years. And that's why it's really important that we be very focused in our evaluation and in our prioritization so that we really can get the very best bang for the buck. So, this is the Tampa Bay Water information that we are carrying right now that helped us craft that estimate. All of the projects are in the feasibility phase. I should mention that all of the projects for the other entities that were listed in that table are also in the feasibility phase. So, we're updating this information continuously and we're workshopping it with our board annually. So, we expect Tampa Bay Water to be making a decision on what projects will move forward in 2022 and that funding request to come in in 2023. And our board is committed to being a partner on the development of those projects. This is kind of an interesting slide. This is over the last nine years averaged together. So, this is what an average year has looked like over the last nine years. And the main point that I want to make about this slide is that for, over the last nine years, we have not had any really large water supply initiatives coming through any of our cooperators. These things tend to happen in waves. We've been living off of, in the entire Tampa, or in the entire district, basically, projects that were built over 10 years ago. So, the funding that is represented on this sort of annual year snapshot does not really represent what we know is coming. Even so, we've spent about $74 million a year on projects with about two-thirds of that being for our cooperative funding program. We expect the water supply, that section up there that's highlighted towards the top, we expect that number to go way up for a series of years. So, this is a really confusing graph. I'm not going to describe it. I'm just going to kind of tell you what it's supposed to convey. This is our, our 20-year look ahead for our board on our budget expectations. The light blue is our normal project funding. The dark blue are those large water supply initiatives that we know are coming that were listed in that table. The red is our operating costs. And so, the, the main point of this is that we know we can afford the $900 million neighborhood of investment to ensure that the, the region's water needs are met, but for about a 10-year period there, we're going to have to prioritize other types of projects. So, other types of projects besides the ones that were listed in that table with our regional entities for water supply, we're going to have a tighter scoring process and we are going to need to draw a line essentially. So, the, you know, the main point is that we're committed and we, we will continue to work with our regional entities to ensure that these programs are successful over the next 20 years. And that's, that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, first of all, thank you again for being here and really just, you know, on behalf of our commission and also Tampa Bay Water, thank you for the incredible partnership. Some of those projects that you talked about that aren't water supply, water quality, for instance, I know we're looking at a fairly significant water quality project for the Tampa Bay, Tampa Bay Waters member governments. And clearly, another supply source, as you said, is coming. So, we're, we're looking at another one there. What do you see as the future for, over time? How do you see the, the use of reclaimed water as a irrigation source, as a augmentation source, but maybe ultimately down the road in a decade or two as a potable source? What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's really very, very interesting what's going on right now with potable reuse. It is, we, right now, our board has prioritized for us getting to 75% beneficial reuse across our entire district. Right now, we're at about 52% of reclaimed water flows being beneficially reused. We know that in order to reach that 75% mark, we're looking at potable reuse projects. That's, that's really what is on the horizon. There's a lot of things going on right now and the rules are being developed by DEP for, to make potable reuse permitting a little more streamlined. So, that's going on right now. We've been involved. There's also a Senate bill right now, Senate Bill 64 and a House bill that's moving through committees, Senate Bill 64, that will prohibit surface water discharges. So, a really big deal in the state of Florida. When that passes, that's really going to incentivize the development of potable reuse projects. We at the district do have potable reuse in our alternative water supply list, which means that in order for those projects to be funded, they will need to be, those, those funding applications will need to come in from regional entities. But we do believe it is on the horizon and we very much support potable reuse. In fact, we have more than 15 feasibility analyses that we have funded because we will fund feasibility analyses from entities that are not regional entities.
Well, as you know, one of our alternatives that we're looking at is using reclaimed as, not direct use, but as a, as a barrier and providing pressures and getting water in other areas. So, I'm excited about that possibility and, and the, and the use to come. Is there any, any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for that very thorough presentation.
Thank you.
When you were speaking about the 11 wellfields, is that inclusive of the wellfields that the city of St. Petersburg sold to Tampa Bay Water some years ago to pipe that water in and provide for additional, an additional water resource?
Yes, absolutely. St. Pete was very much involved in the partnership agreement and the selling of the wellfields to Tampa Bay Water.
And I'm so glad you talked about the unfortunate bill that's traveling through related to the discharging of surface water. I had a chance to tour one of our plants recently here and we talked about that. What has been, or has there been any additional discussion related to growth and development and looking at that wonderful topic, Toilet to Tap?
Yeah, the, the city of Tampa is really moving forward with a, a project. They're calling it Pure these days. We are going to be funding a very small component of it. About 13% of that project is what we're looking at for our board's approval with this year's funding approval. So, that one is, is moving forward. The degree to which it is fully implemented as a water supply project is still to be determined. I understand the city of Tampa is working closely with the staff at Tampa Bay Water to understand how it, how it may become a, a water supply project. So, it's coming.
And, and you discussed that the board is going to be requesting that the parameters you had in place before related to the 158 million gallons per day down to 90, having some relief from that, I guess to meet demand and need based on growth. So, what level are you looking at? Not going all the way back up to 158, but because we do have our dry seasons when, you know, we have to really hold back on water dispersment.
Well, so the application came in from Tampa Bay Water requesting to stay at the same quantity, 90. So, in order to meet growing demand, new projects are going to have to be built.
Okay. And any timeframe on when you're looking at getting that done so that we stay on top of the growth and development that's coming? You see new apartment complexes, houses, subdivisions, warehouse districts, all of that.
Well, so I know Tampa Bay Water is working very hard on their feasibility analyses and expects to bring to the Tampa Bay Water Board their recommendations for which projects to move forward with next year in 2022. And then they'll be moving full steam ahead. So, yeah, they're, they're taking care of business.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Thank you again for being here today.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon and thank you as well for your presentation today. It's very informative. My question is, in our county's strategic planning session that we did a few months ago, we added into our strategic plan sustainability and resiliency, especially as it relates to the issues of sea level rise and the impact on our coast, coastal counties. And I'm curious about, you didn't have anything in your strategic plan on that issue and I'm wondering if it's part of your values as well.
So, yeah, that's, we're kind of on the cusp of that. There's actually some things moving through the legislature on that as well that may be resulting in some changes for how we, some of our initiatives and some of our focus. But I do, I would point out that we, we do have that in our strategic plan in the form of flood management and flood relief projects. So, the big projects that we're funding now in Hillsborough and Tampa are, you know, tied to flooding that's, that's increased, gotten worse over time. So, you know, we, we already are focusing on that and I think on the horizon we'll be, we'll be focusing even more.
Well, thank you for your answer and while I appreciate that you're focusing on it a little more, I, I believe that it's one thing to say it, but it's another thing to see it in writing because it gives you a better opportunity to measure what you're actually attempting to do. So, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Anybody, anybody else have any questions, comment? Mandy, thank you again for being here. Appreciate it. Really appreciate the partnership here with Pinellas County, but also with Tampa Bay Water.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye. Okay. Our last presentation today, we've been trying to recognize some of our 501(c)(3)'s, but also our businesses and we're kind of alternating months. In this month, we're going to recognize a business really predominantly in South Pinellas County. And so, I'd like to have Claudia Johnson from the Grand Hacienda to come on up and I'll, I'll join her. Okay. Well, it is a delight having you here today, Claudia. And we really wanted to recognize Claudia, who is the owner of the Grand Hacienda Restaurant in Pinellas County. Three branch, three restaurants now, right? Working on a, working on a fourth. North County?
In Hillsborough.
Okay. Oh, Hillsborough. You missed North County. Anyway, Ms. Johnson's passion for Mexican culture and cuisine inspired her to create fresh, authentic Mexican dishes at locations in downtown St. Petersburg, Tyrone, and St. Pete Beach. Ms. Johnson has managed to continue to grow her business in Pinellas even during the pandemic and in a very challenging industry. Ms. Johnson's majority women-owned business pivoted to adjust to the changing conditions with assistance from the Pinellas Cares Business Grant Program and the PPP loan. She has plans to open a fourth restaurant, as we were discussing later this year. Please join me with a warm welcome to Ms. Claudia Johnson to share a little bit of, with us, an overview of her business in Pinellas and thank her for choosing Pinellas County. So, if we could welcome her, please, that'd be great. And then I'll take a picture and then I'll give you the microphone, okay?
Well, good afternoon. Well, my English is, I'm from Mexico City. So, well, thank you very much, the Board of Commissioners, and also thank you very much to Pinellas County Economic Development for all the help and support they have given us. I'm coming from the biggest city in the world, Mexico City. So, you can imagine that coming from 25 million people that will leave every day and we have to move and cross the city, coming and put a restaurant in St. Pete Beach six years ago is like a pleasure. You're in paradise. It's just incredible. So, we opened six years ago. We started being 12 persons. Right now, we're 60. And once we opened the fourth, we're going to be probably around 85. And people had loved our margaritas and our tacos and I think that the main thing is that what we have tried is to just bring a little bit of what we are and merge the love of what we feel with our little space of Mexico to Pinellas County. And we have been very well received by the community. But also, we had had some challenges, as you all know, which we had, the first one was when we have the hurricane. And I had the pleasure to meet Cynthia Johnson then and their staff. And then she said to me, "Claudia, you know, there's some support for the county." And I felt very bad as a businessperson and I have worked for Pfizer for many years in Mexico before in economic development. I felt that why we couldn't make it ourselves. And really, that help was an immeasurable help from Pinellas County and FEMA that she guided us through to things that we didn't know. And being an immigrant, you don't even know. I mean, we knew how to do the food, but we didn't know how to maneuver through the economy and through the things that the county can offer us. So, that was a huge help because out of all the St. Pete Beach, only three places, ours, Walgreens, and the next door, didn't have electricity for about three weeks. So, everybody's moving and then you have your, the responsibility of 12 people that you know that they cannot leave if you don't have them something. And our policy has always been to just help them somehow and find a way and rebuild. And we made it through. We were building St. Pete downtown on Fourth Street and that helps us to move along. We opened Fourth Street. We had a great reception for, from the community. And when we decided to open the other one, we opened on the 18th and the 19th, we closed it because of COVID-19. So, we were not able to get any support because that was a new company. But we have already put whatever savings we had in that company. So, we really turned then for the PPP and for the, the support from the county specifically. And they helped us to get that so that we can continue working for the other, to the restaurants. And that was amazing because, you know, you open and you have all the suppliers and everything and then the next day you have to close it. And, you know, we had to do negotiations with the mall and restart and we didn't want to fire anybody. So, everybody was having a job. So, we said, "Okay, well, let's do something." You know, whoever can be a driver to deliver, whoever can be packing, whoever can be painting so we can finish some remodeling things that we have with what we got the PPP. And we didn't lose any employee and we didn't lose any customers. So...
Very awesome, awesome story.
Cynthia has really been very, very big support. I have girls. I mean, and if I could give them margaritas every time, you know, I tell them, "Do you want a margarita?" "No, no, we're working, Claudia." I said, "Okay." But the county having great, I hope Hillsborough County is as great as Pinellas. I was telling Cynthia, really, Pinellas County has been amazing. You know, we wanted to be in other places in Pinellas County and we hadn't find a place. So, we found where we're going to be now. But our idea is to grow, to let them know what our passion is and just to keep being part of this community. So, I really want to thank Claudia's support. Thank you.
Amazing, just an amazing story. You say you've been here six years?
Yes.
Incredible. Tu español hablas perfectamente, ¿verdad? Y tu inglés es muy bueno también. But it's really good to have you here in our county and your, your dedication to your employees is just unbelievable. And to this county, we just thank you so much. And again, congratulations on getting through what was a really difficult year. congratulations on getting through what was a really difficult year, and continued blessings to you and your family and your business.
Thank you very much, too. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that was awesome. All right. We're going to move on to our local state of emergency, and for that, I'll turn it over to Barry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Once again, we're back to ask for you an extension of the emergency order up and through March the 19th. And is that correct? And so at this time, I'd like Dr. Cho to come forward. He can provide just some basic data in terms of where we're at, what he's seeing in terms of trends, and he can also provide updates regarding our vaccine program.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So this week marks the one-year anniversary of our first case here in Pinellas County. It's been, it's been a year really living through this pandemic. But through, through the collaborative efforts of our partnerships, we've helped with the response and now with the sort of the vaccination rollout. So in terms of some of the numbers we've seen this past year, we've seen cumulatively 68,085 cases of Pinellas County residents infected with COVID. Along with that, we've seen 1,432 deaths. So in terms of the death, I know there's been people that have been fortunate to not really be affected or not know anybody, but I've known too many of those in this group and have, have been to too many memorial services. So it has been a trying time for all of us, I think, and those impacted by COVID. So in terms of our numbers, so through this pandemic, we have seen peaks and valleys through this. Currently, our seven-day case count is 169, which is, has been improving over the last few weeks. Our 78% positivity was 4.5%. Some of the, one of the biggest metrics we monitor is also hospital capacity is doing well at this point. However, there's still 167 COVID patients still at the hospitals. One of the things that we're also monitoring is the variants at this time. At a state level, we've seen 642 cases here in the state of Florida with the UK variant. We have seen five cases of the Brazilian variant and one case of the South African variant. And it's important to track some of those variants because some of the experts do believe that the proliferation and expansion of these variants may spike, cause another spike in some of our COVID trends. Additionally, especially with the latter two variants, the Brazilian and the South African variant, that, that some of the vaccines may not be as effective. So something to important note in terms of monitoring these types of variants. The state does have a robust surveillance system. They do spot surveillance testing, various gene sequencing. Some of those variants out there are COVID infections. On top of it, they look at some of what they define as breakthrough cases from vaccines, meaning a case that occurs 14 days after the two-dose vaccine or 14 days after the one-dose Johnson and Johnson vaccine. So they do sequence all of those to see if that's a factor as well. In the meantime, the CDC does continue to recommend, as we always said through this past year, to continue to wear masks and continue social distancing, especially in light of the fact that we're less than 20% of our population vaccinated here in Pinellas County. So now, in terms of our response, a lot of our attention has been focused on the COVID vaccine distribution efforts. To date, 175,649 individuals have at least received one dose here in Pinellas County, which translates about 17.7% of our total population. The 65+, that's been one of our primary targets, priority groups here in Pinellas, just because of how large our group is. We vaccinated 132,149, about 52% of that larger 65-plus group. We've recently had a call with the Bay Pines VA. They've been a great partner. They've been doing a lot of great efforts in terms of vaccinating our vets here in Pinellas County. What we did discover was that that number that they vaccinated did not get reported to the state numbers. So there's an additional 10,000 vets here in Pinellas County that's also been vaccinated as well, about 8,800 of which are older than the age of 65. So as everyone's aware, that the governor expanded the priority groups to include law enforcement officers, fire department, and school staff greater than 50 this past week. They've also expanded the ability to write a certification form for the medically vulnerable, as well as continuing with our previous priority groups of 65-plus and healthcare workers. What we've developed here again with the partnerships of the county, the emergency management, fire paramedics, as well as our staff at the Department of Health, we've developed a pretty robust distribution system, the primary of which is our community vaccination sites. With those three sites now, consolidated to three sites, we have the capability to vaccinate again over 20,000 a week. So central, our larger central Pinellas site is doing second doses. Our two community sites are slated to do 10,000 doses. However, we, as the governor mentioned, are seeing the same thing at a local level, softening of the demand to some degree, largely due to probably this, this priority group, that I think part of it is due to the fact that we have all these other access points, the pharmacies and medical clinics to some degree. And we have done a decent job of vaccinating over 50% of our 65+. With the governor to expand the age group to 60 next year, that's about, there's about 80, close to 80,000 individual residents here between the ages of 60 to 64 in Pinellas County. So I think our demand will go up again once that is in effect, starting Monday. So other points of distributions here in Pinellas County includes our pharmacy programs and Publix, and Walgreen, I'm sorry, Walmart and Sam's Club, as well as CVS, which started in the past week and a half. Hospitals and medical clinics are what we call the VFA providers have increased over that, over the past two weeks as well. We're continuing the senior community missions with the assistance of the state. Also, the CDR Health is doing vaccination to, over the last two weeks, to HUD housing facilities, about 12 facilities, communities as well. And lastly, our health equity efforts, we continue to partner. We have a working group comprised of faith leaders, leaders in our community. To date, we have done 11 missions in churches, in, in communities and organizations that serve communities of color, with two more scheduled this week. So hopefully, we'll continue to, continue to vaccinate our individuals and really get that vaccine out there. With that, I'll stop there.
I think, Commissioners, what you're seeing is a change in where people are accessing vaccine. And so we know there's people that want the vaccine that haven't figured out how to either get on our site and obtain a slot, or that don't want to go through one of the other websites. So there's a lot of efforts, and we're working with different community groups to try to help people make those connections. But there are vaccine appointments available. That's also the reason we went to a two-week window to where you can see different opportunities. So because before, it was very hard to schedule for a one-week period. But there's so many different places that people can access that it's very, very confusing. We're going to be doing training next week with libraries. There's many community groups that are helping, helping people sign up, navigate them through the system. They could also call the phone number and get access that way. So we're going to continue to work with that. But, you know, we know that there's different groups out there. If there are other ideas and stuff, we do follow up on those, trying to make those connections. What you'll also see, though, is you'll see a new demand coming up with, with the increased numbers. And so again, we'll continue to try to communicate out and make sure people know where to go and when. And especially when we run into time periods where, like at the end of last week, we didn't have all the appointments for this week set, so there was available appointments. And so obviously, we want that word to be out, and we want people to know that they're, that we're continuing to try to expand that. The other thing is, there's, and we received some information this week about no North County site. We only had the one site in Palm Harbor. It was a very, very small site. But the state was working on setting up a site. That's been put on hold. They are going to do that, but it's been put on hold because they're trying to select a location. It's completely within their decision in terms of when they, what site they select, and when they set that up. But that was one of the, one of the challenges, is trying to find an appropriate location where they could set, set up a site. And that would also address some of the North County service issues. So those are a couple of things. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, the North County site, that was going to be my first question. We're getting a lot of communication on that. The Publix, the Walmarts, the other pharmacies that are through the state program, we don't get that data. We're not receiving the data as far as, so the number, the 132,000 that are over 65?
So the number from the state pharmacy programs and as well as the federal, they do report to the state system. The only thing that was lacking is that any of the federal sites at this time, through the VA and other federal programs. But we, we are working with the state at this time to develop that interface and include it in that daily report.
So, and not to get too deep into the numbers, but the 8,800 veterans that, you mentioned the VA, the 8,800 veterans that were over 65, is that included in the 132,000 number, or is that on top of the?
It's on top.
Okay. So that's, I mean, we're, we're doing better than even that we thought as far as 65 and over.
Right.
And I guess the question is, I guess it is what Barry talked a little bit, is, are we hitting the point of demand and supply for that 65 and over? And if so, if there is that softening, I'm just curious if you have a thought on why the, the demand has dropped after we saw such a scurry at the beginning?
So in terms of, the possibility is, you're absolutely right. If you factor in those numbers, it turns out to be closer to 56% of that 65+. So part of it is maybe a saturation of that. I hate to think that's the case. Love to get as many people who want the vaccine to get as vaccinated. But there is other sites now, more than there was four weeks ago, or even two weeks ago. There's the pharmacy sites. We have a lot more medical clinics distributing their vaccines to their patient population. But again, I think, and to the point is, there is openings this week. And I don't know if we made that clear, and we've been sending that messaging out, there are slots available for those in that current priority group. I do see, again, as we move into next week, and it is expanded to the 60-year-old, that demand to increase again.
So we want to tell everyone who's over 65 to get their appointment today before the young 60 to 64-year-olds jump in there online on Monday.
Absolutely.
And then it becomes on Monday, and does our, what is our, is it 9:00 AM that people start making appointments, 8:00 AM, or when can people start making appointments on our site for 60-year-olds?
So we're working with our scheduling partners now, and we're seeing, we're trying to see when would be the optimal time. I think they have to change some things in the system, but we will message that out once that is available.
Okay. Again, thank you very much for all you're doing.
No, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I just had a couple. First of all, the North side question. We're getting several calls from there asking about access to the vaccines up there. So appreciate your updating us on that. The 60 and over, I was going to ask about that as well. What about doctors and dentist offices that do have interaction with patients that, you know, they're 50 and over, but they haven't fallen in that, they're not, they're not associated with necessarily a hospital? But what are we doing?
So just to be clear, at our community sites, we are currently vaccinating those older than 65, all, all healthcare workers, regardless of age. And then 50-year-old plus for, for school staff, law enforcement, and fire department staff.
So real quick, healthcare workers includes doctors' offices, dentist offices, so they can all be getting their vaccines now?
Absolutely.
There's a misconception about that. So I don't know where it's coming from, but I go to my doctors a couple of times, and they're pulling on my shirt sleeve like, well, when can we be recognized? So I'm not sure that, I don't know what the disconnect is.
So we did, we did put the messaging out there, but please, again, here, since we're saying this publicly, if you're a healthcare worker, you can get the vaccine at the, at the site. We have worked with the medical associations as well as our various distribution lists. But there's obviously going to be some smaller practices that may fall through the cracks, so let's try to get that word out together.
And where do we, like, we've given a couple of names for the special missions that you have going on. How do we get an update as to whether they've been contacted or scheduled or whatever? I just wanted to make sure that I can circle back with the folks that have reached out.
So, and I think you're referring to the more of the health equity initiatives?
Mm-hmm.
So what we do is, again, we do invite folks to join our working group. So we do have those calls every other week. But beyond that, too, we should be reaching out. We have developed a list. We have a process in place looking to see whether they fall into the, what we call the SVI, the Social Vulnerability Index, to target the highest areas of need. Then the other factor is that we do a site visit to make sure that, number one, they have the facility and the capability and the space to host a vaccination site. So, but we should be reaching out to them.
So I can check back, we can check with your office to see if, okay, just want to make sure we circle back. Folks have reached out, and we've given their names. Anybody else before we hear from the public? Okay, Dr. Cho, thank you. Appreciate that. All right. We've got a few people to hear from, some here in the, in the room and a couple online as well. So we'll start here in the room, and let's see, let me get the ones here first. Let's go to Pastor Matt Johnson. Oh, excuse me. Hold on, if you're here. That's, that's for the next item. I apologize. That's for item six. So back to five. Okay, we should have one here in the room. Jill Gibbs. Hi, Jill. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you could just give your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Jill Gibbs. My full address, is that what you said?
Yeah.
1204 Alameda Avenue, Clearwater, 33759.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I want to start off first by thanking you for your service to Pinellas County. My husband, two boys, and I moved here three years ago from Tennessee after feeling extremely limited in the activities that I was able to do as a mom with my boys. My husband Googled the most accessible city in America, and Clearwater was number one. I've loved all the activities available for me to do with my boys, which I recognize comes from hard work on your part in ensuring that those in wheelchairs have as much access as possible to this beautiful county. I am here today to ask you to end the mask mandate in Pinellas County. While I recognize your desire to do what you can to slow the spread of COVID-19, I do believe that just about every resident in this great town has the same desire. Thus, there is no need for a mandate. I won't speak to the science or the facts regarding masks or asymptomatic spread. I believe that when diligently researched, those facts can speak for themselves. Instead, I would like to share just from another perspective. I, being a quadriplegic from a gymnastics accident, have limited diaphragm function. A mask brings dizziness and headache within minutes, and I so appreciate that in your mandate, you include an exemption for those with medical issues. However, when a mandate is in place, many stores are either unaware of this exemption or simply will not honor it. And at times, they've spared no rudeness in letting me know. After explaining the exemption in the mandate to them, employees and even customers will remark that it's not that hard. Just put a mask on. I do also very much appreciate that in the mandate, you allow parents to decide whether their children under 18 need to wear a mask or not. Because I've seen the effects that frequent mask wearing can have, particularly on children, I prefer my boys don't wear one. Again, however, many stores are unaware of this. My boys have been confronted and even told by a customer in a store that he, quote, "hopes they die of COVID." This leads to my other reason that I'm asking that you end the mandate. I believe that when county or state leaders mandate something like mask wearing, it perpetuates immense fear. It convinces its citizens that they should be very afraid, that their fellow neighbor is dangerous to them, and that without a mandate, people are incapable of choosing healthy protocols, which then brings out all kinds of unfriendly behaviors and breeds a hostile community. Should COVID be a concern? Absolutely. Is it something to be so terrified of so much as to tell a child that you hope they die because you were afraid of getting it from them? I don't believe so, not with the 99.5% chance or more of recovery. I believe the vast majority of Pinellas County residents are doing an excellent job in participating in what they believe to be helpful in containing the virus. in what they believe to be helpful in containing the virus. Our county's numbers have been very low, oftentimes under 200 daily cases in a county of almost 1 million residents. And so I do ask that you would consider ending the mandate.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate your being here. Okay. Let's see. Dawn Bowler. I think she's from, in the overflow room, so. And after Dawn, Shannon Brooks.
Okay, Dawn Bowler, St. Petersburg, Florida. Nearly nine months ago, you passed the emergency mask ordinance, much like a state of emergency threat determination, determining whether the emergency for the mask ordinance still exists. I think it's important to look at the why and the what. So I went back to the June 23 meeting. The what? You were presented with three ordinance versions. You selected the strictest, but nine months later, there are no options. Why were there options then, but not now? The whys? State of the hospitals would be severely strained. Did it happen? To what severity? For how long? And how long ago? Panic discussion over hospital capacity and the need for hospital transfer. Has hospital transfer happened? How many times? And when was the last necessary transfer for capacity reasons? I have recorded the past 13 days of hospital capacity. If you would like to see them, we seem to be stable. Panic discussion on exponential growth in terms of 125 a day going to 250 today to 500 a day, et cetera. Would 30 cases a week not fall under the same discussion? And since the ordinance, how many of those ill were avid mask wearers? And are you monitoring the effectiveness or lack of during the peaks? Not knowing much about the virus was strongly emphasized, including IOU or lingering effects. It was stated, sorry. I lost it. It was stated, we are learning. What have you learned over the past nine months that has changed the dynamic of where we are today? There was a statement about being scared. Are you at more, less, or the same level of fear today? Emphasized there was no vaccine, as much as I don't agree with it, there is now. The positivity percent is flawed because it is based on the seven-day rolling average to tests. A decrease in tests increases the positivity percent. I also have recorded the last 12 days, if you'd like to see those. But for three examples, June 23, a 219 seven-day rolling average of 4% positivity with 5,475 tests. February 9, a 257 seven-day rolling average, 6.3%, 4,079 tests. If the same amount of tests had been done, we'd have been at a 4.7%, not 6.3%. February 28 through March 6, 183 seven-day rolling average, 2.63%, but 6,947 tests were administered in that timeframe. We will never get to the bar set by the medical professionals based on this type of calculation. In nearly a year now, 94% of our population hasn't even been infected. But somewhere in all this, instead of being looked at as people, we are now looked at as walking diseases. We've lost our humanity. This could be a start to the discussion that was mentioned in the last meeting. The question is, will you allow it to continue?
Thank you, Dawn. Shannon Brooks. And then Greg Pound.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. Do I have to give my address for all that?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Shannon Brooks, 2291 Gulf Bay, Clearwater, Florida. I'm speaking for the mask mandate to please be removed. It greatly affects people like me who has a breathing and an eye problem, so I can't even wear the visor. And when I go to the doctor's office, they tell me I actually had an emergency and I was supposed to go to Axelrod. And I tried, I couldn't, and they ended up sending me away. I mean, if I, if this is happening to me, thank God it wasn't what they thought it was, I would be dead. And we're not talking about that. We're not talking about the people that are being affected by this order. And it's not really you guys' fault. It's the, the thought that, well, the government has to know what's best and everybody needs to do this. But they're not reading the fine details that people need, special needs should be exempt. And I do, I do thank you for that exemption. I do. But it needs to be definitely put out there, hey, if they have a medical reason, give them the exemption. Children are being, I'm watching children. I have, I know five children from the ages of five to 13 who've all tried to commit suicide in this year. We're not talking about that either. And these masks are what's affecting them. They're walking around, seeing no facial expressions from people. And people are panicking over these masks. And that's just sad. So on everything else, I think you guys are doing great, but I really, really would appreciate if you guys would remove this mask mandate. Thank you again. Have a great day.
Thanks, Shannon. Okay, Greg Pound. And next, next will be Lisa Donald, O'Donnell, excuse me.
Greg Pound, Largo, Florida. I have three minutes and I have a doctor that's administering this COVID-19, and I want you to hear what she has to say to America.
... designed killing tool. Language is important, and everything that we say gets totally scrubbed and scrutinized these days. So I think to say it accurately is important. The messenger RNA that gets injected in with this shot co-ops a little piece of machinery in your body called the ribosomes. The ribosomes read the recipe. And as it reads the recipe, it makes this protein called the spike protein. That spike protein is supposed to be the same protein that's on the surface of the SARS-CoV-2 virus, and is supposed to be at least similar to the spike proteins on the circulating coronaviruses that have been out there for more than 60 years. And so this spike protein, what it does on the surface of the virus is it acts like a key and binds to something called an ACE receptor on the surface of your cells. When that, when that virus takes its key and binds to this, to the ACE receptor, it opens the door and allows the virus to go in and start to replicate. So what they're trying to do is to develop an antibody to that, that spike protein, protein to block the key from getting into the lock, so it can't get inside the cell and start to replicate. Because the antibody is not made to the entire virus, it's made to a small little piece called a spike protein. So it doesn't behave as, the same way an antibody does, that is to maybe measles or chickenpox or shingles or mumps or something like that. So the problem is, Alex, is that we are injecting mRNA that has a recipe in it to build a protein, to make an antibody against the protein that is supposed to keep us healthy and keep us from getting sick. We have no idea how long the protein's going to last. We have no idea how long the antibody's going to be around. We have no idea how long the antibody's going to last. And we don't know how long they're going to continue to, the B cells are going to be active.
Hey, Greg, bring that to a close, so you can hear from you, please.
We have no idea because we have no longer studies.
That's enough.
And every single one of those steps makes you susceptible to illness for the entire population, for an unknown period, maybe the rest of your life. That you may be susceptible to autoimmune disease, shock, allergies, and death from something that is supposed to keep you from getting sick.
Okay, that, that was only two minutes and 30 seconds. And if you want to look at it, just go, medical doctor exposes mass eugenics extermination called COVID-19 vaccine. Go and watch it yourself. There is the evidence, that's the truth. People need the truth. And you need it yourself, because you're going to take the shot and you're going to experience the results of this shot.
All right. Lisa O'Donnell, please. And then Laura Bradshaw.
Hi, my name is Lisa O'Donnell. I live in St. Petersburg. This is an open letter to the Pinellas County Commissioners written by a member of Pinellas Watch, but his words represent all of us in Pinellas Watch. In the summer of 2020, in a hearing before a judge in Pinellas County, an attorney representing the county defined the Pinellas County State of Emergency as temporary. The temporary mandate to wear face coverings in public in limited circumstances is similar to other health measures designed to protect the public's health, safety, and welfare, Pinellas' response states. Nine months later, the judge might be surprised that the Pinellas County define as temporary in an effort to sway a legal argument has turned into a perpetual weekly renewal with no definitive endgame. Shortly thereafter, on a split vote, the Pinellas County Commissioners voted to abdicate their main responsibilities by placing the power to renew the state of emergency into the hands of an unelected and unaccountable bureaucrat. The net result of that poor decision was that the Commissioners would not receive direct briefings on a weekly basis while forcing the residents of the county to live under unusual mandates afforded by the Commissioners' own mandates enacted by the state of emergency. Simultaneously, the Commissioners also voted to minimize citizen input, stifling communication at exactly the time when the citizens' voices should be sought and considered, not censored. Commissioners Karen Seal, Janet Long, Pat Gerard, and a former Commissioner voted against the people and for the censorship and abdication of duty. Commissioners Charlie Justice, Kathleen Peters, and now Chairman David Eggers voted to continue to listen to their constituents and to continue to receive briefings and maintain decision-making regarding the state of emergency. In this March 9 meeting, the state of emergency is on your agenda. You should follow the lead of more than half of the counties in Florida by letting the state of emergency expire, separating the state of an emergency from the Gerard Commission mask mandate and re-estating a new state of emergency that is freestanding absent a mask mandate and reclaiming your authority to be the decision-making body we hired with regard to the continuance of your new state of emergency. It's beyond time for you to take a personal interest in the management of the single most important issue facing the Eggers Commission. Please stop hiding behind the county administrator to do your dirty work. Take responsibility and lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Bradshaw, please. And then we're going to go to people that are online. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Laura Bradshaw. I've been a resident of Pinellas County since 1997. Do you need my address? 4737 Berwin Court in Palm Harbor. I'm currently employed as a nurse practitioner. Prior to this current position, I have run clinical research studies as a nurse practitioner, worked as an RN in the ICU and long-term acute care. Back in 2019, we were presented with a new strain of coronavirus known as COVID-19. We have learned much over the past year. We found it to be a more contagious virus than the annual flu, as you know. The R not, as we know, is how contagious the virus is. The flu is 1.3, Spanish flu, 1.4 to 1.8. Measles up to 12 to 18, and COVID is known to be various, they think it's 2 to 2.5. A special concern during that was the most vulnerable population, 65 and up, who for all diseases are more likely to be hospitalized or die. And this has been true for COVID as well, which is why they're of concern. Measures were put in place as expected and as they should have been to flatten the curve so that hospitals would not be overwhelmed. A study by the Columbia University led by Jeffrey Schomer estimates that one-third of the US population has already been infected by the virus. In Florida, we have vaccinated our most vulnerable population, age 65 and up, based on the latest census data. That is 80% or 58% of that, so it's 2,590, because it's according to the Florida Department of Health, 2,599,254. Based on the 2010 census, it's 80%. If you base it on the projected 2020 census, that would be 58% of that particular age group. So we have flattened the curve. As of March 8, 2021, the Pinellas County positivity rate was 5.17%. What does that mean and do the masks help with that percentage? First, you have to look at the testing. We currently use PCR testing, which amplifies the DNA collected from samples. However, overamplification can result in more false positives. On January 13, the WHO revised their testing policy. Instead of using a single positive test regardless of symptoms, the current policy requires reconfirming an initial positive test with a second positive test, and the positive result must also coincide with current COVID, COVID symptoms to be confirmed as a positive result. The WHO also reduced the amplification used in PCR testing, admitting it was resulting in too many false positives. As you will see in a graph I will show later, the positivity rate significantly declined after this change starting January 21, 2021. The deaths of a patient who's tested positive are listed on their death certificate and were previously reported, all were reported to the medical examiner. There's been an increase in deaths this year, both from COVID and other causes. Deaths in 2020 are up by 544,000 over the last year. Calls due to disaster distress line, a federal crisis line saw an 891% increase in calls, according to CNN ABC News. And then, I guess I'm running.
Yeah, you're, you're over. If you could just wind down real quick.
Okay. So in summary, there's 10 different studies that I can show you that show that the mask mandates, I mean, the mask mandates actually don't improve. So here you can see, there's the, in the masks, it doesn't have any effect on the positivity of the results. And I can show you that data. There's 10 different studies that have been listed, which show, especially with cloth masks, up to 97% of the particulates can. If you use a medical mask or an N95, which is a medical situation, that's a different story. So anyway, I'm respectfully asking that you consider the science and...
Thank you. Thank you. You could send, if you haven't already sent the information, you could send it to us.
I have not, but I'll go ahead and forward all the studies and the graphs and things.
That would be great.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Kat, we'll go to the folks that are online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have five individuals who have pre-registered to speak on the local state of emergency. So as I call your name, I will give you instructions on how to speak. So the first individual is Linda Bablin. Ms. Bablin, if you could either raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your telephone. And, Mr. Chair, it doesn't appear that Ms. Bablin has joined us, so I will move on to the next speaker. The next speaker is Tracy Sanders. Ms. Sanders, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine on your telephone to speak. Mr. Chair, it does not appear that Ms. Sanders has joined us either. So I'll move on to our third speaker. It's Mr. Bruce Feldman. Mr. Feldman, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star nine to speak. Sir, once you're unmuted, you will have three minutes to speak. If you could please state and spell your name, state your address for the record. Thank you.
Hello. I am, am I there?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Great, thank you. Hello, I am Bruce Feldman. It's B-R-U-C-E-F-N Frank E-L-D is in David M-A-N, and I'm from Dunedin. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. I come before to oppose the extension of the county mask mandate. Media and public officials over the past year said that they are following science. Well, if you look for them, there are plenty of studies and peer-reviewed articles published by reputable doctors and scientists concerning the ineffectiveness and potential risk of universal masking. Those people don't have any financial or political interest in the results. Due to time constraints, I only state a portion of one from the New England Journal of Medicine, published last year. Quote, "We know that wearing a mask outside healthcare facilities offers little, if any, protection from infection. The chance of catching COVID-19 from a passing interaction in a public space is minimal. In many cases, the desire for widespread masking is a reflexive reaction to anxiety over the pandemic. An analogy of masks versus virus is like trying to stop a mosquito from coming through a chain-linked fence. The publicly reported data that I assume you use to make your decision is potentially riddled with issues. The tests are not 100% accurate. The widely-used antigen or rapid tests can have up to 20% errors, according to the CDC. There should be more transparency about the data accuracy and the margin of error. I don't have time to, here to discuss all the data issues that potentially exist, but I wonder what the data would show if the use of hydroxychloroquine wasn't publicly hijacked. Data shows that it has a 99.97% survival rate under age 65. Don't get me wrong, I am not anti-mask. I am against being forced to wear one. I'm a grown man, capable of making my own decisions concerning my health. If someone wants to wear a mask, that is their choice. A year ago, we knew almost nothing. Now we have prophylactics, therapeutics, three different vaccines, and a bender understanding of the at-risk individuals." The current policy also creates division amongst people as well, and law enforcement can probably spend their time and resources on more important things than responding to mask-wearing conflicts. The Declaration of Independence states governments derive their just powers from the consent of the governed. There is a massive and growing number of the governed that the voters here in Pinellas County, and regardless of they can express their views here at the meeting or online via email, they do not consent to the continuation of the mask mandate. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Bruce.
All right, Mr. Chair, the next speaker is Mr. David Happy. Mr. Happy, if you could press *9 on your telephone or raise your hand in the Zoom application, we will unmute you to speak on this item. Once you are muted, if you could please state and spell your name for the record and state your address, you will have three minutes, sir.
Hi, this is David Happy, 850 East Line Street in Tarpon Springs. Well, now we know that Dr. Cho and Barry Burton are looking to keep us masked until point 00003% of the population, which is 30 people out of 1 million for four consecutive weeks, don't test positive for any virus detected by the PCR test that has somewhere around a 40% false positivity rate. I thought I might switch it up this week and side with Commissioner Long for a change. Commissioner Long, at the last meeting, stated that we couldn't release the mask mandate because spring break is coming up. Before that, it was New Year's Eve being a super-sprender. Before that, it was Christmas. Before that, Thanksgiving, and we couldn't possibly release the mask mandate with Halloween 2020 just around the corner. And of course, we had summer break before that, and on, and on, and on. Never mind that none of those events ever became a super-sprender, but that's neither here nor there, neither did the Super Bowl. So I thought I might propose to the commission the upcoming events that should give us pause in allowing people freedom to choose. You do you must yield to the following upcoming looming super-sprender events. In mid-April, we will be sailing the seas for Gasparilla. And yes, contrary to maskless Mayor Jane Castor, who doesn't own the Tampa Bay waters, the boats will still sail for Gasparilla in April. So even though people on boats will be separated by 50 feet or more, we can't possibly consider setting people free before Gasparilla. That would be irresponsible. May 21 is National Pizza Party Day, and June 25 is Take Your Dog to Work Day. Forget the 4th of July because Mayor Jane canceled it, and so did Mayor Christman, but that's okay, because July also features World Kissing Day on July 6. Masks are not optional, clearly, on World Kissing Day. And then August, we'll be looking at International Beer Day on August 6. We can't have those bars at full capacity, obviously. And then September, we have International Country Music Day on September 17. We all know what happens when you play a little Blake Shelton. People celebrate Periyogi Day on October 8, and then November, don't forget, the 13th is World Kindness Day, and I'm sure there will be tons of hugging on that day, disgusting. And in December, we're all looking forward to the airing of the grievances during festivals. So you can see, with all of those super-sprender events on the horizon, we should respectfully keep people wearing masks until I can come up with another list of holidays for 2022. So thank you for your careful consideration, and please, everybody, stay safe out there.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Ms. Dawn Lechner. Ms. Lechner, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press *9 on your telephone, we will unmute you to speak on this item. And ma'am, once you're unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record and state your address, you will have three minutes. And ma'am, you might have to press *6 to unmute.
Am I, is that better?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Good afternoon, my name is Dawn Lechner. It's D-A-W-N-L-E-C-H-N-E-R. My address is 1511 Lemon Street in Clearwater. I'd like to use my time today to appeal to each board member's conscience. When each of you took office, you swore an oath that finished with, "So help me God," with your hand on the Bible. I know that today an oath may have lost its weight, as if the words are just ceremonial, but I assure you, they are not. They are binding. I would like to remind you of the oath of office that you all swore before your constituents and before God, and it reads like this. State of Florida, County of Pinellas, I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will uphold, support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of Pinellas County Commissioner on which I am now about to enter. So help me God. Charlie Justice, Karen Seal, Renee Flowers, Janet Long, I watched the investor ceremony from November 2020. I listened carefully to each one of you make this oath, and each one of you swear with your hand on the Bible, and Janet even holding it to herself. I'm going to go out on a limb, and I'm going to assume that the remaining three members also took this oath, although I was unable to see it with my own eyes. Your oath is to, quote, "Support, protect, and defend the Constitution, the government of the United States and the state of Florida." With that being said, let me read to you the preamble of the Constitution of the state of Florida. "We, the people of the state of Florida, being grateful to Almighty God for our constitutional liberties in order to secure its benefits, perfect government, ensure domestic tranquility, maintain public order, and guarantee equal and civil political rights to all, do ordain and establish this Constitution." Your oath says that you will support, protect, and defend that. You didn't take an oath to keep me safe or to make sure I stay healthy. You took an oath to protect my liberty and its benefits. Yet you continue to force medical advice on your people, which is not part of your oath. It is time that the seven of you uphold the oath you swore to. There is no caveat in there for pandemics, and it's a slippery slope that we've been on for a year now with unattainable metrics in sight for stopping this overreach to an illness. There are therapeutics, vaccines, and just plain living a healthy lifestyle to combat this issue. You have even been repudiated by your own governor as he removed your ability to find individuals who dare defy you. Businesses are not so fortunate, however, as they are continually harassed by code enforcement as they believe it is a law to wear a mask indoors. Mask-wearing should be the responsibility of the people. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, I don't have any other speakers.
And the other two that were, they haven't checked in?
They have not appeared on the Zoom call, though.
Okay, thank you. Kat, Barry, did you have any other comments? Dr. Cho, did you have any comments, additional comments?
No additional comments.
Okay. Nothing? Dr. Cho? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wasn't going to do this, but our speakers kind of compelled me to do it. Barry, I'm going to ask you if you'd do me a favor, and you may not like that I'm going to do this, but you had someone look at all the data in every areas around us that didn't have mask ordinance to see if it was a difference. And at the time, when we were, the hospitals were filling up, it was around the holiday time, and you were thinking about maybe more restrictive things, you said, "Well, if we look at the data, we're not going to have anything to go on," if I recall that question specifically. And so maybe it would be helpful for the audience to hear that data, because you never presented it to me. I just remember in that phone call conversation, you said that. But if, in fact, you had the staff look at every county that had a mask mandate and all the counties that didn't, that were kind of comparable, and I'm pretty sure that's what you did, I would love to have that data at the next meeting, which is in April. And hopefully, in April, our numbers will be down even lower, and maybe that will give our audience something to look at, because we haven't talked about that publicly. What's the difference? Is there a difference? And our most vulnerable population in the hospitals, you know, more than 50% have been vaccinated, and so I get that there's other risks and there's variants out there, but I also know that there is extreme fatigue out there. I also know that our overdeath rates are so high, they skyrocketed. The mental health crisis rates right now are so high because of the seclusion and the isolation and the fear, and so I'm just, I think that would be helpful if we had that. And if, at some point, we get more into the, let's do more prevention, health, wellness, exercise, taking vitamins, supplements, all that kind of stuff, to build up our immune system is so important. But there is real fatigue and frustration out there, and I just think that that data, if you had provided for us, we have a longitudinal time now, nine months, that we can look, it's been a year, actually, since this all started, that we can take a look at the counties that didn't have one and counties that did, and where they were on the numbers. I think it would be very helpful if you wouldn't mind bringing that in, April.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Peters. So I would be interested, Barry, since you're doing that exercise for Commissioner Peters. I know that we had that information as well from FAC, and I would be curious about how that information has changed from the time when Commissioner Peters was talking about it during the phone call to today. I'd be really interested in how that has changed. Number two, while I am watching very carefully the numbers maintain a consistency, and I'm happy to see it's going in the right direction, I do have a concern about the influx of our spring breakers coming from other parts of the country, and I'm worried about any movement that we might do, for example, today or until we get past spring break, because I think that's an accident waiting to happen. We all know that our younger folks find them, or think that they are invincible, and so they're not quite as cautious as some of the rest of us. And so I do think that it would be very meaningful to set a time certain for us to come back and have a deep dive about the plan going forward, because I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Peters said in terms of the fatigue. I know we all are as well, and anxious to get back to some degree of normalcy, and as more and more of our citizens get the vaccine, I'm quite confident that soon we'll be on the other side of all of this horror story that we've all been living through, if that makes sense. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard?
Yeah, I would also be interested in seeing that data, but I also want to, and I asked at the time that we were talking about it last time, I want to see the population density of those counties alongside what their rates of infection were. We've had people send us emails about South Dakota took out their mask mandate. Well, South Dakota has fewer residents than Pinellas County does, and we're kind of packed in tight here. I think that makes a whole big difference between us and the rural counties of Florida, of which there are many. Second thing is, and I'd be very interested in taking a deep dive and, you know, getting out from under the mask mandate. I can tell you that I was scolded last week for having dinner, I was severely scolded. I have two people living in my home that are severely immunocompromised, and I had dinner with some family members that I hadn't seen in a couple of years. And I had to isolate for two weeks, even though I've had both vaccinations already, I had to isolate for two weeks and take another test to make sure that I hadn't been, that I hadn't brought it home. And both of these people that are compromised are under the age of 40, so we're not just talking about people who are over 65. We're talking about a lot of people walking around that you don't know are compromised, or I guess I'm talking to the public as well, that, and heaven knows, we're all tired of this whole darn thing, you know? But we can take our mask mandate away, and the Daily News is still going to be talking about COVID every day until it's over. You know, I can't change that. All I can do is do the best thing I know how to keep my constituents safe and my family members safe. So that's it.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, and I mean, I think this is good conversation. This is what I was talking about at the last meeting, that, you know, we need to be able to talk about this without, you know, being at a decision point necessarily. There's a lot of data that people give to us, and we get other data that may be tenfold that amount of data that tells us something, a little different story. None of us up here are doctors. We're doing the listening and trying to understand what we have in front of us. And I think the comment about, you know, people are tired is absolutely a fact. I think the fact that even this week, we hear from the CDC talking about if you've had shots in small groups, and, you know, there's so much messaging that's going on out there that our residents are getting closer and more ready to at least looking at that. So as we have that conversation, and I think I'm hearing maybe at the next meeting, we have that conversation, again, we're not necessarily talking about making a decision one way or another at that meeting. We're just talking about having dialogue about this very controversial issue that our county, our residents, and all of us are facing. I think it's extremely important that we do have that, that we do have that discussion, Barry. So maybe at our state of emergency at the first meeting in April, we can at least open up that dialogue, and we'll get an update from where we are on the vaccines, how the numbers have been progressing over the, you know, and obviously, some preliminary numbers from early spring breakers that are here, you know, to see if there's been any effect on our numbers there. And just again, having that conversation, as we're starting to see summer on the horizon, you know, school's going to be out, kids are going to be home, I mean, there may be some spring, there may be some summer school going on, but there's a lot of opportunity here to take a look real hard at this and where we are, and let our residents know at least what we're thinking here about the mandates and about the precautions that we're taking on their behalf, or on many of their behalf. So, okay?
We certainly, yeah, we can certainly do that. You know, when we looked at it before, if you recall, we tried to compare that. We did look at density, the counties, most of the counties that did not have mask mandates were more rural counties, population of half of what we have or less. However, you know, we tried to track that, and there's no question, you can see that there's a seasonality to this. And so there are certainly issues of density, there's issues of whether it's a tourism area, there's issues of simply a seasonality to it. So there's a lot of factors that go into it. We'll try to provide you all the data that we can collect, and then we can have a discussion, and we'll do that here at our April 13 meeting.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the thought that we, I remember having the discussion early on about the places that are, I can't remember the term that we used, that were absolute musts, that people go to grocery stores, drugstores, and the like, right? I mean, and so we had that discussion about those types of places, and then all other places, and I think maybe those kinds of discussions need to be had again as well. So did you have some? Oh, Commissioner Peters, yes?
I wanted to say one more thing. I apologize. Everyone keeps talking about the emergency orders, if that's the mask ordinance, and I've explained it so many times personally to many people, but I think it's worth explaining one more time that the emergency order is for something completely different than the mask mandate, where they're six feet apart. That isn't an ordinance, it's not voted on every single week. The emergency order is strictly for vaccines and supplies and other things that we have to have for the people that are at risk and need the vaccine. So, you know, just to repeat that again, for those that mistake that assumption that the vote and the change for the emergency order every single week has absolutely nothing to do with the mask ordinance, that ordinance was voted on one time, and until we repeal it, it won't be brought up again. So, you know, we can always have a discussion about that ordinance, but just so people understand the difference between the emergency order, I just wanted to repeat it one more time for their benefit. Thank you for your indulgence, sir.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just as the governor extended the state of emergency for another 60 days, I would move approval of this agenda item.
A second from Commissioner Peters.
Okay, but Commissioner Seal?
Did you have a comment? Sorry, Commissioner Seal.
I'll be voting in favor of it, but I just want to remind everyone, we asked the medical professionals in Hillsborough and Pasco and Pinellas County to put together the consensus statement, and I think they, and if you look at all the attached research that they did, they spent an enormous amount of thoughtful time in saying these are the statistics that we should look at, and it should be no more than 30 new cases a day in Pinellas, and a 3% or less of a rolling seven-day average for four weeks. So I want to put my, I have faith in the science, I have faith in the fact that we are seeing a reduction in the cases, and... spent an enormous amount of thoughtful time in saying these are the statistics that we should look at. And it should be no more than 30 new cases a day in Pinellas and a 3% or less of a rolling seven-day average for four weeks. So I want to put my, I have faith in the science. I have faith in the fact that we are seeing a reduction in the cases. And I just want people to stay alive and be safe, and that's where I come from. It is an inconvenience, and I totally understand that we're getting tired of it. But I'm happy to be alive, and I'm happy that my friends and neighbors are alive.
Yeah, and I think that's well said. I think everybody shares that feeling up here. I, you know, I think more than anything, our residents sometimes want to hear from us, kind of a thought process that we're going through. I mean, that thought was a good one. There are others that we can talk about. But I think having that conversation is a healthy thing, to be able to share where the numbers are at that point. I don't know what's going to be happening in 30 days from now. We could, those numbers could be at 2.5%, 3%. They may have a spike, and they may go up a little bit. So there's no telling where that's going to be. I don't know where we're going to be with vaccines. I assume we're going to be doing that 10,000 a week, but you don't know, 10,000 plus a week. So we'll wait and see how that, yes, Barry, did you have something else? Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to our citizens to be heard. And we have a couple, let's see, we have, two, three, I think we have about five folks to hear from. So first, we'll hear from David Ballard Geddes Jr. And Greg Pound will be next.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. As I've said before, the best way to conserve water is by not using so much water. The best way to protect water is by not polluting, by not defecating in the water supply. Last meeting, we talked about Senate Bill 64. In that bill, statute 381.0065 gives reference to a waterless incinerating toilet, whereas our feces would be incinerated as a way of composting it, defining this waterless incinerating toilet as an onsite sewage treatment and disposal system. As a society, we must take immediate action in deploying comprehensive reform in the way we dispose all of our household waste products overall, from recycling of our plastic bottles, aluminum cans, and yes, our feces must have its own neighborhood recycling bin, as I have brought to this board in the past. We must also return our gray water usage back to the earth aerobically, as I have displayed in this diagram. Directly injecting reclaimed water, directly injecting temporarily treated fecal nitrates anaerobically into our vital groundwater supply is inappropriate and propagated science. Our politicians having henpecked statute law displays an ill-founded disregard as to their primary purpose, neglecting their essential role, behaving indifferent to their vital duty of their obligated position as a trusted servant throughout government, whereas statute 403.067 recognizes both public and private partnerships, as in being a responsible party to any noncompliance of the law, whereas omission, prolonged inaction, procrastination, and delay in Federalist Paper 65 is seen as pernicious, intentionally corrupt, and liable as propagated, contrived, unwarranted, and masked in Federalist Paper 67 to include multigenerationally propagated misleading enterprises of faction dubiously imposted in as government, as assailed, as stemming from George Washington's farewell address, as being liable. Averting a water crisis and capitalizing on such water issues are in conflict here. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Greg Pound, followed by Pastor Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Greg Pound. I want to replay this since I was interrupted.
No, I've heard, we've already heard that. I don't want to hear that again.
She's one of the top medical doctors in the United States of America.
Listen, Greg, I gave you the opportunity to play it once.
Why did you interrupt me? You give me three minutes. Why would you interrupt me in the middle of this?
I already.
Okay, okay, we'll bypass that, but I want the people to go and look at this. I want you to see what your county commissioners do not want you to know, folks. Go, just Google "medical doctor exposes mass eugenics extermination called COVID-19 vaccinations." Go watch it. Go listen to this woman. She's a United States American citizen. She's one of the top medical doctors in our country. And she cares for people. She cares for you, because you're going to expose yourself to something that's going to, you're exposing yourself to something that's going to, it's a genocide is what it is, just like Bill Gates says. He says, you go watch it, Long Beach, did you listen to this thing I said last time? You guys are traitors. I don't know why you interrupted me, Chair. Okay, just like you guys on your merry-go-round, just like Welch is now the mayor of St. Pete? I mean, how did that happen? How does Ken Welch go from here, you move him from here to there? We can't get you guys out of office. That's why I ran for sheriff. I ran against illegal people running for sheriff. I was a shoe-in candidate, and I would have cleaned this place up. There's enough people in the Sheriff's Department who knows how to do it, and they want it done, because we got criminals. They're working under criminals as their leaders. You guys are traitors. You're what they call the New World Order or the globalist. That's what you are. You're sunning us out. Our country's been sold out to China, and you guys are working with them to destroy our country. And you want to exterminate the American people. And they're like sheep, they're like shepherds. I was brought up to obey. As a child in my family, we were brought up to obey, to be submissive to our government, be submissive, because we thought you guys were doing what was right. We thought you guys were, and then when I find out how you guys lie and you cheat and steal, you have so much money, you don't have enough money? And you got millions and millions of dollars? You're traitors to the people. And we've, and our framers wrote all about this kind of people. I mean, they've experienced the same thing. That's why they wrote about it. That's why we have a separation of powers, and we don't have that anymore. I mean, we have, our country's been hijacked, it's been sold out, and you guys are part of the problem. You're not the solution, you're the problem. And we got to figure out how to get you guys out, because we can't vote you out, because you're on your merry-go-round. I mean, come on, justice, how many times, I mean, you know what's going on, buddy? You're something, brother.
Okay, that's, that's enough.
You guys are really something. Hey, listen, I've been following you guys up in Tallahassee. I've been following these people for over, almost 20 years now, 20 years. I know you guys are traitors. I listened to you talk, you're liars. You're lying to the people, and you don't care about nobody but yourselves. And you're bringing yourselves under judgment, and it's due time, something happens to you. I mean, somehow, we got to get you out of office. We got to take back our country, because it's out of control. The whole system's out of control.
Pastor Johnson, and then I think we'll go to one or two people online. Hi, Pastor.
Good evening, afternoon, Pastor Mac Johnson, 1295 Church Street, Largo. And, you know, I just come again because, you know, the Lord keeps saying we got to continue to be reminded about real life, and God says, I put it together. Now, he's calling us to come to control, to be controlled, but he is the controller. You know, I want to share with us a little bit about, as I think of the pandemic here, I think of, I think of, you know, God calling a prophet back in the old days. You know, God would call these prophets, like in this case, he called his prophet, he had Jonah, and he told Jonah to go and preach to this city. Now, all these people were totally into their own thing, about their own way of life, and God had made life for people to walk with God. And it's the same way today. I mean, a lot of our country and the whole world, you can tell, have just gone away from God. So God allowed this epidemic to come to where it speaks to all of us. And God called Jonah. Here in Jonah, verse 1, it says, "The word of the Lord came to Jonah, the son of Antima, go to the great city of Nunavut and preach against it, because its wickedness has come up before me." Now Jonah, the Bible says here that he fled from the presence of the Lord. Now, how do you do that? How do you get out of God's presence? Well, obviously, when we don't walk with God, we are, in a sense, out of His presence. And that's what Jonah did. But then again, God called him, and he spoke to him, and he went back, and he spoke to that city. And the Bible says, all those people repented, and they came back to God. And then it says, as Jonah, before he went to the city, he got on this ship and headed to Tarzus, and as he headed to Tarzus, what happened? The ship was, all right, it was out of control. And when they threw Jonah over, it got back in control, and Jonah went on, and he prayed. The Bible says Jonah prayed, and he prayed a prayer, like, "In my distress, I call on the Lord, and He answered me." I'm saying to us today, we must recognize that God is sending some things into our lives and around us that we might call on the Lord in our distress, and He's going to answer us. And once He answers us, He wants to go back and tell our families and our friends, hey, listen, the Lord has done this. He revived my heart. Now I'm calling you to get your heart revived, and let's take this to the rest of the world. The answer to all of our distress is what? We need to repent and pray. Amen? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor. And I did have somebody that was calling in on the phone and attending in person, and it's the same person. So David Lee, if you're here, please come forward. And welcome.
Thanks. Sanitize this real quick. I don't know what was in that plastic bag. It's David Lee, Nury Park Neighborhood in the Lilman CRA. And, you know, it feels like we're really headed towards a pivot point in the Lilman CRA. And so one thing that doesn't get talked about a lot is all the progress we've made. And so I'd just like to mention a couple of things to you. It's really been incredible. The wheels in the CRA are really starting to turn. Ray Nury Park has been a big driver of that. You know, we're seeing record traffic in the park. It's hard to even find a parking spot there sometimes on the weekend, and we're, you know, of course, happy to have that type of problem. In the neighborhoods, it's just been, you know, we're seeing improvements in almost every direction. It's most apparent in the Orange Blossom neighborhood, and then over in the Nury Park neighborhood. I mean, we're seeing block by block, you know, house by house improvement. We're getting millennials moving in, buying their first home. This whole area in the CRA is, you know, it's a $10 Uber to get to downtown St. Pete. And so that's a really big deal to millennials. That's a really big metric. So we're proud of that. And there's a lot to be proud of when it comes to neighborhoods in the CRA. I think it's also important to recognize that all this progress in the neighborhoods has occurred under the existing land development regulations, you know, without experimental changes. So I would just say, let's be careful with that and make sure we don't mess that up, because, you know, that part of the recipe is going really well now. But what we have in the, going on in the CRA is really a success story. I don't hear about it a lot. You know, we have these sparks in the neighborhood, and those sparks are going to continue to grow, and they're going to creep out into other areas where we still need improvement. One thing about that progress, I want to say, that progress is fragile. And so I really, I really want to say that I hope you understand, when someone comes into our neighborhood and they threaten to interrupt that progress, I think you should expect that we're going to, you know, be a little protective of what we've built. And I just want you to understand that that's, that's what that is. I think it's a good thing. I think it's natural, and I think it's a good example of the, of, you know, all the progress we've made. So I just want to say thank you to the staff, the administrators, you know, and the members of this commission who return our phone calls. Thank you. You know, thank you for being patient with us, and I hope what you hear, you know, above, you know, probably everything else is, we just want a seat at the table, and if you give us a seat at the table, we promise to be in our best behavior. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Ms. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to thank Mr. Lee for his involvement and his continued persistence on making sure that we are listening to the neighborhood and listening to the folks there, and I appreciate your positive comments today, David.
Thank you. We're going to go to our consent agenda, and there are a few items here. I just wanted to bring note to our file and receipt nonprocurement items under item 14. Then there is a Roosevelt Creek watershed partnership with Pinellas Park. The total cost is $713,000. The county portion of that is $206,928. And I'm also going to ask that number 16 be pulled. I'd like to have some conversation about that, and we have one card on number 16 as well. So if we could, does anybody else have anything that they want to pull besides? Okay, do I have a motion, please, for the approval of the rest? Commissioner Long on the motion, Commissioner Seal on the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we'll go to number 16, Mr. Burton.
Item 16. Item 16 is a ranking of firms. This is with Wade Trim for Professional Engineering Services pertaining to our wastewater collection system master plan. As you stated, the contract is for a variety of different component pieces to our wastewater treatment system. The contract includes development of septic-to-sewer programs and to develop policy alternatives to managing private sewer systems and private sewer laterals. So they're going to be looking at our sanitary sewer overflow issues and all of the different comprehensive studies that need to go into creating our long-term capital plans. Megan Ross is here with our Director of Utilities. She'd be happy to answer any specific questions regarding this program.
Thank you, Megan, for being here. Go ahead.
Sure. So Megan Ross, Director of Utilities. A good afternoon, board members. So the purpose of this project, as Barry stated, is to implement a comprehensive and holistic approach for management of our wastewater collection system, with the primary goal of reducing and eliminating sanitary sewer overflows while also developing a number of programs, including the septic-to-sewer program. So there will be included within this project both short and long-term planning horizons evaluated for our capital improvement program. And I would also like to note that the project will span over five years, and considerations for financial planning and rate analysis are included within the scope. This master plan aligns very closely with the goals and strategies of the wastewater stormwater partnership, as well as, you know, regulatory requirements and capacity analysis that we have to do. So I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Yes, Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Megan, and thank you for all the great work that you do for us every single day. I am constantly impressed by your expertise and your knowledge. So I'm not sure if this is a question for you or if it's a question for you, Barry, but I wanted to see if it might be appropriate. I'm sorry I didn't bring this up, Barry, in our debriefing. It was kind of a last-minute thing that was brought to my attention. Could you speak to the opposition email that we got to using Wade Trim?
No, I haven't seen it.
Has any of the rest of the staff seen it?
I think you're referring to one of the small business enterprise firms, SPSS. Yeah, so I believe that their, their issue had to do when we were originally scoping out and negotiating the fee for this project and detailing out the different task items. They originally, you know, there was a significant fee that was associated with some of the items, and their original amount was around $284,000. We went through the entire project and almost, we de-scoped a lot of these items down significantly, not just this firm, but all of the different firms and subconsultants that are involved. So they ended up with a fee around $75,000.
So they ended up with a fee around $75,000 for their portion of the project. So they are still involved in the project. I think their issue had to do with some of the de-scoping of the items for their portion of the project.
Well, actually, they are indicating that, in their opinion, the all-in-house performance part of this contract violates the spirit of the Small Business Enterprise Program's objectives. So I don't know if you have any comment on that, but I know we worked really hard on that.
Yeah. My understanding of the Small Business Enterprise Program, and I'm sure Administrative Services and Purchasing can speak more to that, but in the RFP evaluation process, there's a certain number of points awarded for having a small business enterprise in, as one of your sub consultants. So there is no established fee that's required as part of that. It's a little bit different than a construction project where we have a minimum percentage that needs to be allotted. In the CCNA process, we select consultants based on qualifications and then negotiate a fee after that. So the points were awarded for having an SBE business.
Okay. Well, I apologize for getting in the weeds with that, but I was just concerned about violating that, that program that we worked so hard on. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, Commissioner Seal.
Yes, and you answered a lot of my concerns via email. This started out as a $700,000 contract and then went to two and a half and then went to 9.4. So part of my question is, are we actually going to go out and inspect private lines and identify where there are problems?
So that is all part of the policy alternatives development task of this project. So we're going to be coming to you in May, on May 6th, to a board work session and we're going to be discussing all the components of this project and also private lateral policy alternatives for the board to consider. So we won't be doing any inspections until we develop a policy that gets approved that allows us to do that. Right now, private sewer laterals are private property and we do not have an ability to inspect them at this point in time. So our inspection goes up into the property line. But this project will really involve looking at a lot of our data and a lot of our systems and developing programs that then follow through through the implementation phase to address some of the capacity issues that we're seeing specifically during wet weather events.
So they're just going to be doing a master plan based on the data that we have?
So they'll be collecting, they will be out collecting data themselves. They'll be taking existing data that we've already done a lot of work collecting. They'll be looking at our existing capital improvement program and they'll be analyzing condition assessments and coordinating a lot of those inspections that we need to do to determine what parts of our system need to be addressed.
So in this policy discussion, if we do authorize looking at private laterals, private property laterals, is that included in this 9.4 million or is it additional amount?
So what will be included is developing the program and assisting us with implementing that program. So developing, you know, we're going to have to operationalize that internally, you know, whether we look at inspections internally and how we do enforcement. There's a big part of this that involves the public outreach component of that because it would be a significant change to what we're doing currently. So a lot of that is included, that implementation plan is included within this.
Okay. I just wanted to really understand exactly what we were getting for this type of investment. And I think I have clarity, but...
I can go through some of the specific task items to talk a little bit through it.
Megan, if I can help, so for instance, let's, let's take...
Let's boil it down into...
Yeah, let's take the issue about private laterals. You could, you've got SSOs within the system, okay? You've got to correct those. You could do capacity improvements in lines or you could look at private laterals, but you first need to know where the problem is coming. So they're going to have to do flow testing and different things like that to then bring back, here's, here's what you could do, here's some different options you could do and here's the scope of those. And so they're going to be taking the lead in defining those different pieces. You could take that and apply that to almost five different areas of their system in terms of, the same way with SSOs and what other types of things we could do. You could do equalization basins to be able to, you know, level out where they're getting some of their system problems. So they, but they've got to scope that. They've got to look at that and then bring it back. So it's got a base amount that is a not to exceed, but a lot of this will be, have to be refined based upon the decisions that we make along the way regarding which way we're going to go on some of these policies.
Yeah. And so a lot of these tasks, you know, would have traditionally maybe been pieced out into separate individualized projects, but by doing that, we don't have the coordination we need to address all of the issues together holistically. But absolutely looking at capacity improvements specifically in our collection system, where do we need to build those attenuation tanks if needed to address some of these wet weather events? So there will be a lot of effort towards that.
Commissioner Gerard.
Yeah, two things. To go back to the SPSS, SPSS opposition, it looked like this person was saying that all subcontracting had been taken out of the contract. Is that the case or are they still...
No, that's, they're all still there. There's a total of nine subcontracted firms. So during that negotiation phase, when we were negotiating the fee, we actually brought the fee down significantly. We eliminated some parts that we felt we could do internally. And so there were a lot of different parts within the fee that got cut down to this number. So, right. So I think...
These people are still involved. Actually, this was written in December, so, you know, maybe they know more than they did when they, when they sent this, but...
And I think it's important to point out for the public that per state law, for an engineering firm like this, you have to do a qualification-based selection. And then you negotiate a price based upon that scope. So you negotiate the scope and then you apply that. That's a little different than like a bid.
Well, maybe somebody needs to check back with them and just...
Sure. Yeah, we can do that.
Scope out what their understanding is right now. The other question was, we're going to have a presentation on options for laterals in a couple of months. Are we going to have enough information by then to actually make an informed decision?
We will. We're gonna, we are putting together, we've been putting together options internally. So we've gotten a pretty good head start. And so I think we'll have a good set of options to be looked at. It's one of their first task items. We've already got meetings set up with Barry to go through them at the end of this month. So I think we're in good shape and there, you know, the options are going to range from, you know, just all kinds of options to be presented to help narrow down some of the options that we want to look at.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the agenda summary, it mentions there's two SBE firms included in the contract for an amount of 354. Is that still, that's still accurate?
That is still accurate. There's another SBE, Valerian, that it will be helping us with the public outreach component.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Long, for asking the question related to our commitment to the Small Business Development Center and the purpose for garnering programs to help small businesses, small minority and women-owned businesses when we have contracts this large. My concern is that, well, let me ask the question. So when corporations or businesses, I'm sorry, when businesses are submitting for a project like this, they get so many points for including minority businesses within their proposal. I'm asking that question.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And so because they include minority businesses, minority and women-owned businesses in those proposals, it gives them additional points, which elevates them in the ranking. So once it elevates them in the ranking, there is conversation and dialogue that goes back and forth, you know, so that we get the best bang for our buck, right? I get that. My concern is that in order for those small and minority businesses to remain a part of the project, they've spent quite a bit of money preparing themselves for the project. When costs are reduced by staff, because you saw that maybe some costs were more than what you all felt they should be or what the trends say they should be, then those small and minority businesses appear to be the entities that get pushed back a little bit, if you will. I'm trying to be polite in what I'm saying. And this is one of the reasons why, based on his, his letter, this is one of the reasons why small and minority businesses continue to complain about the relevancy of the program. I'm not, you know, arguing that you please don't take it that way. But this is why they complain about the relevancy, because larger corporations like Wade Trim get the additional points in order to get the project. Once they get the project, then that small and minority business does not receive whatever it was that they included in order for that larger entity to, to, to receive that project. And so maybe it's a conversation for another time at a workshop or, or something. I wish Dr. Johnson and Mike Midell were still here in the room, but I really do believe, and this isn't singular to this organization, this county, it's, you know, in cities and other places, that if my, small and minority and women-owned businesses are kind of eked out after an organization has accumulated the points that they need for inclusion on the front end, then maybe we need to look at reassessing whether or not that's the appropriate contract that we need to move forward with. Because I know all businesses are fair, but it's kind of not fair because they got the upper hand by including small and minority businesses. They got the points. But now since staff has kind of looked at it and said, "These numbers are a little inflated," you know, "and we need to kind of bring it, reel it back in to reality." I agree with that. But as a result, it seems like things are being pushed aside on the small and minority business and the larger entities not taking the hit in the cuts where they probably should take the hit in the cuts. So again, that's not a chew. It's just based on, you know, what I'm reading here and just some trends that have been occurring over a period of time, not just, you know, here or you for today. So I just, I would like for us to maybe stay mindful of that. And again, I don't know how interested my colleagues would be in something in, by way of a discussion later on, but if persons aren't going to maintain the integrity of the rationale for having a small and minority business development center, for providing the additional points so that they, you know, show that they are being partners with us, then maybe they shouldn't be the ones getting the business with us.
Joe, did you have anything you wanted to add to this conversation?
Sure, Commissioner. What Megan said is correct. You know, bottom line is there are points that are assigned to the team and the SBEs can be part of the team. But when a project is de-scoped during negotiations, sometimes that happens, things will fall out. And the fact is, the project was de-scoped to some extent. And unfortunately, in this particular case, apparently that, that's what happened. And I personally have not seen the correspondence, but I will take a look at and respond back in kind, but I have not actually seen that. I really don't know what the whole complaint is, but I will look, look into it.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I think we've worked extremely hard to develop this, this program. You know, it doesn't mean that it's perfect and that it doesn't need to be tweaked. So I don't think having a conversation, again, to take a look at, you know, the good and the bad or whatever, I don't want to call it the bad yet, but the good that's happened, but also some of the shortcomings that we can maybe adjust.
Yeah, one of the main things... Just a second. So one of the questions and to the heart of Commissioner's question is where the cuts were made. And so we need to look at that. So if it's a construction project, we know because they bid and we know what subs are part of that. And our SBE program then tracks throughout that process to make sure that the generals don't drop off the subs and that the subs get paid and everything else. So, so we have a complete system that closes the loop on the construction side. This is on a professional negotiation process, which is dictated by state law. I don't know the answer about where, where those cuts occurred to the heart of your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can just speak. There were cuts to several of the task items, specifically a lot of the program management because that seemed to be a lot of money and we wanted to reduce that part. And I believe this firm was really involved in some of the project scheduling. That's their specialty. So, but there were cuts to a significant portion of the task. So it wasn't just this firm where there was a reduction in price. It was across the board.
So was it, it wasn't just an SBE-type business?
No, it was all the firms that were involved. There's nine sub consultants. We cut a lot from various components throughout. So it wasn't just that this portion, this sub consultant was cut. A lot of the project areas were trimmed down to be more mindful of what our needs are and doing some more work internally.
Okay. Yeah, Mike, again, thank you. Appreciate that, Joe. Yeah, my, my problem has been just the way you all have, I mean, not the way you're looking at the project, which is holistically, but the price tag and what are we getting for it? So a lot of design time, a lot of management time, that you're talking about $2 million a year, roughly?
Yeah, so I can go through some of the main components, you know...
Probably about five people full-time working for Pinellas County for each, each year. I mean, at the numbers, 2,000, 80 hours, that kind of thing.
Right.
So it's a lot of people working full-time. So the deliverable is not anything to do with construction, not anything to do with testing, not anything to do with inspection of lines. It's about consulting-type service.
It's, it's partially inspecting of lines. We will, we have portions of the project that are involved in going out during rain events and inspecting and flow monitoring specific areas. We have a complete overhaul of our hydraulic analysis. Our hydraulic planning tool that we use is going to be totally overhauled to account and better analyzed these wet weather events. We're implementing a full septic to sewer program to include funding alternatives, grant writing to get funding and evaluating, prioritizing what areas of the county that we need to approach and get off septic systems and where we can support that with a funding perspective with expansion of our, of our sewer system. And we have the inflow and infiltration characterization, which again, will be taking a targeted approach into our system and looking at what are the areas that we need to improve, not just from condition of our pipelines in terms of structural integrity, but where is some of that water leaking in? And where do we need to go and improve to keep that water out of our system? Again, master planning is a big component, not just, we want to implement short-term solutions to address some of these capacity issues, but then we need to look long-term and develop a 30-year plan to deal with some of these issues. Public outreach is a big component. So the consultant, you know, some of the sub consultants are specializing in public outreach so that when we implement the septic to sewer and the private lateral policy, that we have public outreach associated with implementing those alternatives so people understand what we're doing, why, and so forth. Financial and funding analysis. So this will include a total rate plan analysis, our next multi-year rate study for fiscal years 24 to 27. So it will also include financial management. If we need to get bonds, if we need to do any kind of loans to account for some of the funding needs, to make it an easier burden, if there's any kind of significant rate shifts based on some of these capital improvements, it will include that financial support and assistance. So it's really a multi-year integrated approach, looking at all of the parts and pieces in our wastewater collection system. And we'll also be looking at backup power issues. Do we need to install backup power at all of our lift stations? And what's the plan? What's the cost? What's the O and M?
So as these projects come up, actual projects come up, there won't be any more consulting work that we would maybe normally have seen under a different, a different approach. That, that's all being done through this contract.
Right. So there, there will be altern, there will be other firms that need to do some design work that comes out of this, more detailed design, but some of the preliminary design and engineering will be done as part of this project.
Remind us of that when these projects come up, that what we've already done for the project, already paid for for the project and what's additional, because that's been part of the, part that I've wrestled with.
Yeah, yeah. And just another part is looking, really developing a risk analysis of our assets. So right now, how we inspect and, and maintain and inspect the condition of our assets, it's, we're basically going to be developing a better management plan for assigning risk scores as far as what projects... scores, as far as what projects and programs that we need to do, to be able to more rapidly implement.
Yeah, yeah, well, probably should have been on the regular agenda, there's a lot of interest in this, a lot of questions about it. I do think it's probably a good approach, that holistic approach, just so long as when those projects actually come up, we actually understand what's already been paid for.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then what, what additional. Did you have something else, Commissioner Seal? Please.
Just one last question, which is, could, you know, we're paying an outside consultant a burden fee, which obviously makes it a more expensive task. In years past, I've said, is it better to add staff that are essentially less expensive than hiring a consultant? So, this is, this is a very big-ticket item, so you wonder whether we would be better to hire some staff that could do some of this.
Well, you know, I think, you know, it's a five-year project, and I think to account for, in any kind of infrastructure capital plan, there's going to be some years where you're spending significant dollars due to the age of your assets, and we're coming up on that. But then there's going to be years where that workload goes down, and you're not going to need the level of staff. So I think what we're seeing now, you know, a lot of our systems are coming up to the end of their useful life. So I think what this represents is that five-year push to get these projects out there and done, but we, after that, we, you know, we'll have to reevaluate and see, do we really need all those internal staff? Because that's, you know, that's a significant period of time, and potentially a higher cost just over the long term of someone's career.
So are we going to get anything done, though, during this five years, or is this just all a study?
No, that, that's why we took a different approach, that this is going to be action. So this is going to be an action-oriented approach. This is not just studies. This is going to take the studies we've done, and we are going to get actionable results. So I've been very clear to make sure that's true.
This is going to make your capital, where to put your capital improvement projects. So are you going to do this, or are you going to do this? Well, you need to know, system-wide, the impact of those different choices. So it'll really align that. The other thing I would say is that no one person, no engineer, one engineer can be an expert in all different areas. And so when you have a, a larger firm like that, they bring different disciplines and expertise to be able to study those different options and issues, to be able to bring solutions to you, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We do have one citizen to be heard, and that would be David Ballard Geddes Jr.
Again, thank you, Commissioners. My name is David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. During the alphabet soup days, President Roosevelt systematically blasted over 800 miles of ditches in the Everglades, effectively draining the Everglades, as well as the Okefenokee and the Green Swamp. The entire eastern seaboard was ditched and drained, the Kissimmee River leading into Lake Okeechobee is now a canal. In the 1970s, developers here in Pinellas County paved over the cow fields and cut down the orange groves to give way for deed-restricted development. Equipping every home with a sprinkler system, they went about laying waste of the water supply, coupled with the commercial use of fertilizers, and pesticides, and cypress mulch, chopping down our cypress trees and destroying our God-given wetlands today, as a result of overdevelopment, as a result of inappropriate development and wasting the water supply. Our government has taken the liberty to formulate despotic forms of taxation, and freely impose such things as reclaimed water availability fees to support third-party ad hoc water charges, placing a toll charge taxing us on our access to our essential water, which is now considered a privilege. The government furthermore has devised a soon-to-be rainwater tax to support this water initiative, which will soon be coupled with an underground water vault that is to be placed underneath residential driveways for the pumping of rainwater, seen as a private lateral policy. The cost of such development is to be levied from the homeowner's equity for payment, benefiting such third-party capitalistic pursuits at the expense of civilian homeownership. This commission is and has been aiding and abetting an internal third-party insurrection, a longstanding, multi-generational carpet-bagging operation using water as its weapon of choice, and again, is liable in the aggregate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any final questions or comments? Okay, do I have a, a motion, please? Move approval about Commissioner Peters, Commissioner Gerard II. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Who's, who's aye? You're opposed? Commissioner? I'm sorry, okay. So six to one. Is that right? Okay. Okay. That may have been our longest, you know, consent agenda. Apologize about that, for those who might be waiting to talk about the next item, which is our honorary and philanthropic naming rights policy. And we had some discussion about that on, on Thursday, and Barry, maybe you could summarize where we were. Before we get started, I just wanted to let folks, now I'm going to be having to leave here shortly, we have a canvassing board meeting that convenes at, at 5:00. And our county attorney just left for it, so I'll be having to leave probably as, real soon, and Commissioner Justice will take over chairing the rest of this meeting, and then the one item that we have tonight as well. So, go ahead and kind of update us where we got to on Thursday.
Well, on December 3, 2020, they kind of received a letter from the Fred G. Minnis Bar Association requesting that we honor the life and legacy of his impacts on Pinellas County, and naming either a courthouse, or a law library, or something to that effect in his honor. On January 6, we received a letter from the Honorable Chris Brouse, Speaker of the House, requesting renaming of Pinellas County Justice Center after the late State's Attorney Bernie McCabe. So you've had a chance to discuss this a couple of times, and the real question is of the direction, provide direction to staff in terms of how you would like to proceed regarding this, on either naming a facility, naming a committee, or the, the direction of the board regarding what steps you would like to take, or whether you want to make that decision, you know, yourself.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have a few people to hear from. I know we have some discussion here. Can we go ahead and hear from the folks that want to weigh in, and then we'll continue our conversation that we started on Thursday? If that's okay with everybody. And so, let's see. Want to make sure I have, okay, most, all of these are Zoom, I believe, and I know we do have former Senator Jack Lett Bowe in the room, so Jack, if you can come forward. Again, thank you for hanging in there with us during this meeting, and being here in part of, a part of this discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. Next month, I will live in Pinellas County for 42 years. Much of that time, I was in public service, working with many of you. I've never been to a county commission meeting before as a citizen, though. I want to say upfront that I'm proud of our county, I'm proud of what we've been able to do through the years, and mainly it's because we all work together here. Republicans, Democrats, Black, White, Brown, we've always worked together, and we haven't had a lot of the tensions that other parts of our state, and especially in our country, have. One of the constants of that whole time that I've lived here, up until recently, was Bernie McCabe. Bernie McCabe is, he was a giant of a man, in my, in my estimation. He had 48 years' service in his, in, in the office, working for the people, 28 of which was as the state attorney. He was so respected that in his last seven elections, he didn't have an opponent. How would any of us have liked to have that situation? You know, and during that same period of time, when he was getting elected unopposed, we had two circuits just to the east of us in metropolitan areas where their state attorneys were turned out at elections in successive years. He's responsible for so many things, Drug Treatment Court, Veterans Court, he was a mainstay at the Juvenile Welfare Board, and he wasn't a rubber stamp for law enforcement. And we saw that in, in, in the shooting in Dunedin, when law enforcement ruled it was stand your ground, and, and he didn't, and he didn't go along with that. He's always asked his prosecutors to do the right thing. Well, the last time I talked to Bernie was just before Christmas, when I called him and asked him to look at a young man's case that I thought needed somebody to do the right thing with it. And he knew more about that case than I did, and he had some suggestions, including not the normal law enforcement approach, but, you know, mental health, and, and like that. And I'm just hopeful that this commission will do the right thing on this request. You know, we don't really have a policy, we've, we've got several things that are named for people, that, some of which are still alive even. And I just ask you to look at it carefully, and make the best decision that you can with your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Charlie, go ahead.
We have no other cards for folks in person, so we'll go to our online. And Ms. Carpenter, I think we, you want to call the names and go through it?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Justice. We do have six individuals who have pre-registered to speak on this agenda item. The first individual is Mr. Jason Minnis. Mr. Minnis, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application, or press *9 on your telephone to speak on this item. Once you are unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, and state your address, you will have three minutes, sir.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, sir.
Great. My name is Jason Minnis. My current address is 475 Jerome Street, Brooklyn, New York. But as I've stated in the previous meeting, I am a lifelong, born and raised in Pinellas County. I had the pleasure of addressing you guys last, the last meeting, and I just wanted to kind of follow up and reiterate on many of the things I talked about before. I've had the pleasure of actually talking to a lot of you Commissioners individually. I think I've talked about about three out of four of you, or four out of five of you, I've lost track. But again, to reiterate what was said before, I feel like that my grandfather's legacy is something that needs to be acknowledged, not just because he's my grandfather, but because there are so many people who've been putting in work in Pinellas County for generations before, that like lay the groundwork for the things that are going on now in Pinellas County. And so I think that's important, that we obviously acknowledge the people who have done the recent work, but we also have to acknowledge that history, particularly when you talk about people from, you know, from the African-American community, communities of color, and I feel like my grandfather was putting in the work for civil rights, for litigation, for building up Pinellas County to what it's become. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that work, and acknowledge the work of others who've come before as well, because without them, we would not be here today. You know, we stand on the shoulders of giants. And so, I just want to reiterate that I think it's important that we acknowledge him in some way. I, you know, I, as I've spoken to you guys individually, I, you know, I, I understand that there is a lot of, of, of paperwork, and, and red tape, and political math that needs to go into the naming of this process, and I understand there's a committee and how things work, but I just feel like it's important that we acknowledge the work that he's done. Again, Fred G. Minnis, he served his country, he was a support officer for the Tuskegee Airmen, one of the first Black Attorneys in Pinellas County, and worked on civil rights litigation and, and desegregation work, as well as serving his community and building up education, and building up opportunities for his beloved alma mater of Howard University. And so, again, I just want to conclude that I think it's acknowledge, it's important that we acknowledge people who've come before us, so that we can acknowledge the legacy of people who've come after as well. Again, thank you for the time, and again, if any of you do need any more documentation of his history or his legacy, I am here, and most everybody here has my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minnis.
And Mr. Vice Chair, I am going to lower the hands of some people, I know some people have raised their hands in the Zoom application. We do have five more individuals who have pre-registered to speak on this item. The next individual is Ms. Danielle Weaver Rogers. Ms. Rogers, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application, or press *9 on your telephone to speak on this item. And then once you are unmuted, if you could please state and spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Danielle Weaver Rogers, last name spelled W E A B E R hyphen R O G E R S. The address is P.O. Box 514, Largo, Florida, 33779. I humbly serve this year as President of the Fred G. Minnis Senior Bar Association, and I first would like to thank all of the Commissioners for considerate, their consideration of renaming the Law Library or Courthouse in honor of Fred G. Minnis. As stated in our letter dated December 3 of 2020, and individually emailed to you all on March 3, I highlighted that Minnis was the grandfather of Black lawyers in Pinellas, and I would not be able to serve and work in the city attorney's office if it had not been for Fred G. Minnis Senior. We are not simply requesting the renaming because he was the first Black attorney, but because he was an individual who led the efforts to integrate Pinellas County. It is our hope that you will celebrate and stand in support of his work to build diversity in this county. And today, we hope you will vote so that all the residents will learn and know about Fred G. Minnis Senior's legacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Vice Chair, we have four remaining speakers. The next speaker is Mr. Jack Day. Mr. Day, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application, or press *9 on your telephone, so that we can unmute you on this item. Once you are unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes, sir.
Yeah, hi, I'm Jack Day, I'm a retired judge. It was my privilege to serve on the circuit bench for 12 years. I'm a second-generation native of Pinellas, I grew up in St. Pete. I attended segregated schools, and grew up that way. I've been active in the bar and the legal community, both before and after my service on the bench, and I've seen the legal landscape change, but it still has vestiges of our past. Fred Minnis was a significant figure in the legal history of our state. He was a trailblazer for lawyers of color in Pinellas County. Apart from that, he was a fine role model, not only in terms of law practice, but also in terms of civic involvement for all lawyers. It is very fitting that his name be honored as the name for our law library. On a personal note, I'll just add that I've been here for 2 hours and 45 minutes, thinking I was going to appear on Zoom, and I didn't realize it was just audio, I have a, I have a coat and tie on for nothing, I want credit for that. I have nothing more to say about the proposition, I appreciate your consideration of it and your time.
Thank you, Judge Day.
Mr. Vice Chair, the next individual is Mr. Thomas Jackson. Mr. Jackson, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application, or press *9 on your telephone to speak on this item. And again, sir, raise your hand in the Zoom application, or press *9 on your telephone. And Mr. Vice Chair, it does not appear that Mr. Jackson has joined us today, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Ms. Janine Williams. Ms. Williams, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application, or press *9 on your telephone. Once you are unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address, you will have three minutes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Janine Williams, W I L L I A M S. My address is P.O. Box 514, Largo, Florida, 33779. I am a past president of the Fred G. Minnis Bar Association, as well as the St. Petersburg Bar Association. I hope you've had the opportunity to review the detailed letter sent by the Fred G. Minnis Bar, and also the letter from the 20 past presidents of the St. Petersburg Bar Association supporting naming a courthouse or law library after Fred G. Minnis Senior. When I arrived in Pinellas County in the year 2000, I had the privilege and personal labor of love to work on an exhibit in Pinellas County regarding the contributions of African-Americans in the legal community. in the legal community, and Fred G. Minnis was at the top of that list. But I want to impress upon you that the legacy of Mr. Minnis goes far beyond him being the first black practicing attorney in Pinellas County. His contributions have led to the betterment of our county because he emphasized the importance of not only equal rights for all people, but education and the coming together of a community to recognize that every person can contribute to the betterment of Pinellas County. We could talk about all of the lawsuits that he filed, most of which he won regarding integrating Pinellas County, regarding making sure people had a seat at the table when the table was not open to them, and all of the obstacles that Fred G. Minnis faced to do so. Because for some, it was relatively easy to climb the ladder in the legal profession. But for Fred G. Minnis, it was not. We owned our history in the St. Petersburg Bar Association of refusing membership to Fred G. Minnis Bar, to Fred G. Minnis Senior, and allowing him in 2000 to be admitted. We are hopeful that the legacy that he's left in this community and the legacy that he has left in the state of Florida will be honored by this Board of County Commissioners by naming a law library or courthouse after Fred G. Minnis Senior. And I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Vice Chair, our last speaker is Mr. Leon Jackson. Mr. Jackson, if you could raise your hand in the Zoom application or press *9 on your telephone to speak on this item. And then, sir, once you are unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record, state your address. You will have three minutes to speak on the item, and you may need to press *6 to unmute. Yes, we can hear you.
Good, you can hear me good. My name is Leon Jackson, and I'm a former police officer of the St. Petersburg Police Department, and I'm one of the Courageous Twelve, the last surviving member of the Courageous Twelve. You might have heard about me. I know Attorney Minnis, when I first came on the police department in October 3rd, 1963, he and Attorney Ike Williams were the only two African-American police, African-American today of St. Petersburg. And the two attorneys fight tirelessly to fight racism in St. Petersburg, and I highly, highly recommend you to consider changing the courthouse, either the library, Law Library, in name of Fred G. Minnis Senior. During that time, when Attorney Minnis was an attorney, he was segregated against he and Ike Williams. They could not hold any offices downtown in St. Petersburg. Their offices were only located on 22nd Street South. And I understand that when Attorney James B. Sandlin graduated from Boston University, Attorney Minnis went to his graduation, and he recruited a joint, James B. Sandlin, to come and practice law here in St. Petersburg. And I highly, highly recommend you to rename either the courthouse or the Law Library in honor of the great, great Fred G. Minnis Senior. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
And, Mr. Vice Chair, I do not have anybody else who is pre-registered to speak on this item.
Thank you. I know that Senator Rousson was trying to get in. Is he on the...
He is on the call. If you would like me to unmute him, I can have him speak on this.
Yes, please.
Okay. Sir, once you're unmuted, if you could state and spell your name for the record. I'm sure everybody knows how to spell it. State your address. You will have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm State Senator Darrell Rousson, D-A-R-R-Y-L-R-O-U-S-O-N. My address is 535 Central Avenue, St. Petersburg, Florida, 33701. I'm very proud today to speak on behalf of two individuals. I will stand on the letter that I submitted to you concerning Bernie McCabe, and I would like to highlight my good friend Fred G. Minnis Senior and support your efforts and the efforts of the community to have a library named after him. When I got sworn in December 10th, 1980, by the late, great James B. Sandlin, I became number eight. There were seven black attorneys in the entire county, of which Fred Minnis was the dean of the black attorneys. Not only did he suffer through, as you heard from other speakers, segregation, but he excelled at the practice of law, and he excelled at being a community warrior, fighting for integration, fighting for desegregation. And I remember those days. I used to visit with him in his home office off 17th Street and 18th Avenue South. I'm sure Commissioner Flowers remembers that office and us going there to be inspired by Fred Minnis. No one could fault him, no one could blame him, no one could criticize him for being a lover of HBCUs, historically black colleges and universities, particularly Howard University. He recruited three of my siblings to attend Howard, Dr. Damian Rousson, Brigitte Rousson, and Janine Rousson, all went to Howard because of Fred Minnis. I was the only holdout. I went to Xavier, the only black Catholic HBCU in the country. But this is not about me, it's about what he did, his inspiration, his courage, his willingness to give of himself in addition to practicing law to represent others. So I pray and I hope that you would name the library after him. It's time. It's about time. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Senator. We appreciate your input. Stay safe up there.
Yeah, and fight preemption.
Yes, sir.
Don't forget.
All right, commissioners, we've heard all the public testimony that we have for this issue. Commissioner Gerard.
Well, I'll start again. First off, I wanted to... I believe in looking at all the information we have about the nomination for Fred G. Minnis. He meets all the qualifications of our current policy, which we looked at again last week, and I'd like to make a motion that we name the Pinellas County Law Library after Fred G. Minnis.
I'll second that motion.
But I had a question. Is there only one law library? Okay. I wasn't sure about that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Commissioner Seale.
I do believe that there are several locations for the law libraries, but I know we were consolidating them, so is it now just at 49th Street?
Actually, I believe it's at the old courthouse.
Okay.
It's all been consolidated into the old historic courthouses, and I believe the only remaining law library we have.
Okay. Thank you.
It's just the one next door to our offices.
Well, how convenient. Okay. Great.
Further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show that passes unanimously.
Okay.
Commissioner Gerard.
You know, I think, I appreciate Senator LaVella, who just left before...
He's still here.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, you're hiding. I appreciate what he said about how we all get along and it doesn't have anything to do, at least here, with being Democrats or Republicans, and honestly, it doesn't. I don't think I've ever made a decision here based on my party, as if my party was organized enough to actually tell me what to do. So that tells you which one I belong to. You know, I think the name Pinellas County Justice Center is a powerful message to the people that walk through those doors. It says there's, you know, you walk in here looking for justice, not... And I'll say it again, I, you know, I loved Bernie McCabe. I thought he was a big teddy bear. Now that he's dead, I can say that. You know, but I think that it's important that people understand that the justice system is centered in that building, not just the prosecutor's office or the public defender's office, but the justice that this county hands out is located there. And I just think that's important. I think we had a lot of input about that, and I don't know that we're ready to actually look at a motion, because I think it is in violation of our policy that we've had, not that we haven't violated it, a couple of times in the last five years, but it goes against the policy that we have. So I think we'd have to waive that policy if we were even going to make a motion to some sort of naming involving Mr. McCabe. I like what you... I like the suggestions that you had in your memo again this week, although I think three years is a good sort of middle ground. Largo had five years. I thought that was enough to make you forget who that person was in the first place, but three years is a good, and a minimum of one year. But three years, I think, is a good time to be looking at that sort of thing, and it tells you what kind of legacy a person has if you're still talking about it three years later. So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's kind of structure it a little bit tonight so that we're not all over the place. Since we started with the naming of the Minnis and we're talking about Mr. McCabe, let's talk about the McCabe name now, and then we can talk about the overall policy after that. Does that sound good, everybody?
It fills up 12.
All right. Commissioner Seale.
And I agree. Thank you, Senator LaVella, for pointing out that we have worked together in a collaborative fashion across all these years, and I too admired and thought Bernie McCabe was an unbelievable public servant, and we're so sorry that he's not here today. I feel, I agree with Commissioner Gerard, I mean, and we just took action where we're not following our policy. Thank you, Commissioner Justice, for sending forth the photo of, you know, the wing idea. I personally support that. I think that honors Bernie McCabe in a big way of having that part of the courthouse named after him. I also looked up county courthouses across Florida. There is not one in a county courthouse that's named after a person. Now, there are federal courthouses, but the county courthouses are named after the counties. And so Commissioner Long had mentioned that, so I thought I'd do a little bit more study of that. So I believe internally naming areas of... Now, I mean, my research could be wrong, but that's what...
Now, I don't want to interrupt, but I was just trying to think of the Fred Carl courthouse in Hillsborough County. Is that a federal? Okay.
Yeah. There's quite a few federal courthouses that are named after individuals, but I couldn't find one county courthouse. So my preference is to name the wing of the state attorney's office after him, and I would make a motion to that regard.
We have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Seale, seconded by Commissioner Gerard. Commissioner Long?
Yes, and clarification...
Microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for clarification. Commissioner Seale did a search of Florida. Doyle and I did a search of the country and found the same thing, and that was really brought, that fact was brought to my attention by one of our prominent judges in the county. I do agree with the comments made by Commissioner Gerard, and I agree with the comments made by Commissioner Seale. That said, I really liked the idea that you had when we talked about this last week, Commissioner, or whenever that was. Everything tends to kind of roll together, and that was the Hall of Fame. I love that idea, and I've been racking my brain ever since you mentioned it about where on earth, given all of the buildings that the county owns, where on earth would we consider doing that? And maybe it's a separate monument or memorial? I don't know what that would look like, but I think that begs for a different type of I think we all can tell our funny and serious stories about Bernie McCabe. I'll never forget the day I was shopping in Publix, and here he comes in a pair of cutoff shorts and sneakers, and, you know, I had never seen him dressed like that, and he came right up and peered over my shoulder, and I was startled, and I said, "Oh, my God, you look so great in those shorts." And he just roared with laughter. It was hilarious. I've got lots of funny stories like that about him. And I want to thank Senator LaVella as well for his very thoughtful and really poignant remarks that he made. It says a lot about who the man was, so I definitely want to lean on the side of recognizing him in the fairest and kindest and most loving way that we can. And I'm also, excuse me, I'm also very sensitive to some fairly other very prominent folks that we have in our county and would like to see us really consider doing things like this for them in the future. And I'd like to see us take up that policy, Barry, sooner rather than later. And I do agree, I can't remember if it was Commissioner Gerard or Seale who said, "We need to make sure that we do this in order," and waiving any current whatever it is that we have on the books, though I'm not sure we really ever passed anything that's real. Did we, Barry? We did. Okay, well, okay, I stand corrected.
And it's actually five years, so...
Oh, well, but I like what Commissioner Justice brought forward as well. Maybe we could talk about that at another time.
Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator LaVella, thank you so very much for coming today. I know you are a voice of reasoning. He has been a very strong voice of reasoning and supporter of just good, sound policy. So I do appreciate that, and I appreciate the conversation and dialogue on today. I am glad that we're discussing honoring in some way. There were a number of issues in South St. Petersburg. You all heard about, you know, the auto theft issues and some of the drug sentencing issues. And in speaking with State Attorney Bernard McCabe, he supported a lot of the things that the NAACP, National Council of Negro Women, and other entities brought forward to look at addressing issues, not in a punitive manner, but in a way that would make a person whole, have them pay for what it is that they did, but make a person whole. Working with Chief Holloway on the diversion programs in St. Petersburg, not just for the youthful offenders, but also for the adults, understanding that sometimes, you know, with certain felony charges, a person can't get a good job and be able to take care of their family, things of that nature. So I am very grateful that he had a listening ear for those and working with the judges in their various court systems and working with families to really try to encourage a person to make that corner turn. So I am grateful for those things that Bernard McCabe did, to include when we would have our panel discussions for Leadership St. Pete and answering questions and being very specific and kind of matter-of-fact. You may not like my response, but here it is. So I really do appreciate that, and I am glad that the two of you, Commissioner Seale and Commissioner Long, did some homework, you know, related to what other patterns have been, and to look at how we can solidify a policy going forward. I know I was one of those persons in the very beginning that said, you know, we need to have a policy and then follow that policy so persons would know when they're bringing things before us, what direction we could or would be willing to take. So I look forward to that discussion as well. And thank you again for your motion and the second of that motion in honoring him. Thank you, Commissioner Justice, for the very thoughtful outline that you provided all of us with to look at and review, as well as the proposed artistic layout of how it could look in case persons had questions or concerns. So just wanted to make sure I shared those points.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I have a couple of thoughts. First off, the comments on the courthouse as being named, this isn't the courthouse. The courthouse is Clearwater in St. Pete. This is a justice complex, so it's not a courthouse. So it's a little different. I'm in full support of naming the, the complex after Bernie McCabe. And what I, what I kind of regret is that the people that called in the last time we had this on the agenda were so eloquent, and they told me things I didn't even know about. And everything that you just said to me, when you name a building, just like we name in that law library, on somebody who is exemplary, somebody who really went above and beyond to do what is, what is right, the right thing. And so that when people see that name, they go, okay, they look them up and they go, "Why? Why? Why was that person named after that?" Because they were so exemplary, and they went out of their way to do the right thing. And, and the one thing that Bernie McCabe did, just like you mentioned, is making sure that people were whole, making sure that they weren't criminalized for something that they really shouldn't have been criminalized, and to have a really true second chance without it harboring the rest of their life so that they can always work or have a job or, or something else. And so I think he was a great man, and so I'm really in support of naming the complex after him. My question to you all is, we got a request to name the complex after him, and we have just kind of gone beyond that and said, "Oh, we're going to name a wing." Have we asked the person that made the request if that would be an amenable option? Or are we just going to kind of do this on our own when we had that request for that? And I think we addressed the request, and either you support the request or not. I, I don't know that he asked us to come up with another solution. And I don't know if anyone has talked to the Speaker of the House, and, and if you have, I would be curious if it would be the same response that I've gotten from him. So, so, you know, I, I, you know, I support naming the Justice Center. Like I said, it's not a courthouse, it's a complex. And, you know, if it wasn't for his collaborative effort, not only with Chief Holloway, but with the chief in Clearwater and with the public defender and with the sheriff, you know, we've been able to do great things. And when I was in the legislature, I was on the Appropriations Committee for the Justice, Justice Appropriations Committee, and every single public defender came into that meeting. And every single one of them said, "We need money in the budget to replicate what Bob Dillinger is doing," and, you know, I think the world of Bob Dillinger as well. But he couldn't have done the great things if he didn't have the support of his partner on the other side. And when every single public defender in the state of Florida came before, every single one of them came before us and said, "I want money to do what they're doing in Pinellas County because they're doing it great," we had two amazing, great role models in this county that I think deserve to be lifted up and mentioned so that other people can research it and find out why, and maybe be the role models to do the same thing or even better. So I, I really do support naming the complex after him. I, I think, I, I think just coming up with another, another idea without asking the, the, the requester, I don't, maybe that's kind of going too far. Maybe we should wait, be patient, vote on this if you want to go with the policy, and wait three years or wait five years. That's one thing. But I, I don't know, he didn't say, "Name the complex," or something else. And so I think we ought to adjust, adjust with what his request was. And again, if you don't want to do it now, you want to wait three years or wait five years, then maybe that's the thing to do. Commissioner Seale, I'd love to hear what Commissioner, or what Speaker Sprouse said to you, because I don't, I don't know if it's the same thing as what he said to me this morning.
I, let's see. I did have a discussion with him over the telephone, and I know his preference is to have the entire complex named after him. I did suggest this idea of the wing, but he, he does want the complex named after him. But with all due respect, it is the, it's the duty of the county commission to decide on, with all, on these requests. And I feel like this is the, this is a way to honor him. Every person who's going to walk through that state attorney's office will know that it is named after somebody who was meaningful, who had great impact in Pinellas County. And I, I, I also, I did want to address, I, I shouldn't call it the Hall of Fame. Maybe it's the Hall of History. And I mentioned, like at the Supervisor for Elections Office, and it could be done at the Criminal Courthouse Complex of Criminal, CJC, is to have a picture of each person who has served as a public defender and the state attorney, along with the history of them, and maybe their accomplishments, because we've, there's others that have served in this office that have done an outstanding and admirable job, and I think that they also need to be recognized.
Commissioner Long.
So Commissioner Peters, to your question, I also spoke with Speaker Sprouse, and I want you to know that I just did not speak to him on the phone, although I spoke several times to him on the phone when he called me to talk about this issue. But I actually made an appointment and drove up to his office and met with him personally to have the discussion with him. He was very, very adamant about wanting the building to be named after Mr. McCabe. I clearly understood when I left there where he was coming from, and I think he knew where I was coming from as well. I was trying to be thoughtful and honest in my comments to him. And so with that said, the conversation was between him and I, and I don't think it's appropriate to share the entire conversation with you or anyone else. That said, I have really prayed over this issue simply because of the amount and the positions of the folks that have written to us. And I respect them all and hold them, and hold my relationship with them very, very dearly. I spend a lot of time and a lot of effort building relationships with people because I care about them, and I care about all of our constitutionals and try to make decisions from the, from the best place of my inner self that I can, putting everything else aside and just focus on what Speaker Sprouse said, just do the right thing. And I can share with you that there have been many very prominent judges that have talked to me about this issue personally and who feel that it is inappropriate to name. And by the way, it is a courthouse. There are many trials that have been conducted in that building, and if you've never had an opportunity to sit on Judge Farnell's Drug Court, that is definitely a court held in the courthouse, and you want to talk about powerful. That is something to really sit in and watch and listen to. So, you know, I, I really love the little statue that's so famous of Lady Liberty or Lady Justice, or what, what is the, ever the appropriate name, where it's the two scales, the balance between prosecution and defense. And I'm proud of the fact that we changed it from the Criminal Courthouse to the Justice Center, because as my, my colleague so eloquently stated, it represents what this country is all about, justice for everyone that walks in there. And I know in my heart that if Bernie McCabe were standing right here at that podium today, he would be agreeing with that thought and would probably be really embarrassed at the way we have bantered his name around, because basically, you know, he was kind of shy, I thought. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I'm in a little bit of opposition. Obviously, under the Sunshine Law, Commissioner Eggers, who, who left the meeting, can't really communicate directly to y'all, but he, he sent me messages that he wanted to mention, that he's supportive of the dual name for the Justice Center, and for example, the Justice McCabe Justice Center. So for whatever y'all want to consider that, I just wanted to put that out there.
While you've got the microphone on, do we need, does the motioner need to make a reference to waiving our policy?
It would be cleaner if they did, yes. If that, if the intent is to, to move forward in some way other than is in the policy, yes. It's, it's, it's a resolution that isn't binding on you. It's a statement of your policy at the time, but at the same time, it is the framework. Presumably, y'all are going to want to move forward to, to, well, there's been discussion about moving forward to do something else, but as it stands now, that is your enunciated policy.
So Commissioner Seale and Commissioner Gerard, would you so include that perspective on your motion of waiving the resolution?
The waiver of the five-year requirement for...
Yes.
So that's included. Do we, and we can talk about it after we finish this conversation, but do we need to go back and do that with Mr. Menace, since the, the time of passage is certainly gone, but we did not do the committee and those kind of things?
Well, the, there's also a provision, I believe, in here for County Commissioner to bring that forward, so.
Okay.
It's, it's a little looser. The, the substance of it, I think, is more direct with the five-year post-death issue. I think it's probably okay as is.
All right. Very good. Commissioner Peters?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up, and I just wanted to be clear, and I want to make a comment to you, Commissioner Long. Yeah, justice for all, and based on what the testimony's been heard, that's really what he represented. And, and I felt that's what Bob Dillinger represented, and, and I was really hopeful that we were going to come in and, and consider both names on the building when we, when we came back, but that's not what happened in the workshop. So I, you know, I can't support that because, as you spoke to Speaker Sprouse, I did as well, and based on the way you answered the question, I'm thinking that he said the same things to you that he did for me. And so I would rather just take up the, take up his recommendation, either we agree with it or we don't, we waive the rules or we don't, or we just wait the three years or the five years. So I am total support of naming that building after Mr. McCabe and, and/or Bob Dillinger, but I don't believe I can support the, the wing as, because that wasn't the request, and, and based on his communications with me, that, that isn't what he was looking for. And so to honor what his request was, I would, I would not support your motion that you're doing, and I just wanted to be clear that that has nothing to do with how I feel about Mr. McCabe. I think he's amazing, and I think he does represent justice for all, and I do think it's the right thing to name the building after him, but I won't support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Long?
We had many requests that mirrored Speaker Sprouse's letter. Are you suggesting that we take up each one of them?
The backup support that Speaker Sprouse provided us, all supported naming the building.
No, I'm talking about, we had, except all the constitutionals, the state senator, several of them. Are you suggesting that we?
If you're referring to the backup documents that Speaker Sprouse gave us, then they were all supporting naming the complex. So I'm not sure if I understand what you're saying.
Well, I'm talking about the individual letters that we got from individual people that were not part of Speaker Sprouse's letter.
Well, the only ones that I recall, except for maybe two, supported naming the complex after him. Not a wing, but a complex, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? And I, just so that, you know, I, I created that mock-up very crude graphically, but what I could do on, with my skill set, just as an idea of what it could look like, because I was, I was having a trouble visioning what it would look like and what the name would be and, and that kind of thing. So that's why, and then the policy is a second item. We have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Show it passes five to one. Commissioner Peters dissenting. Commissioner Seale?
So based on that, again, thank you for, you know, sending us two separate memos, and with all due respect, I'd like a little more time to think about it, and perhaps we can either have staff work on something, then come back and have the policy in place, or we could have another work session on it, but I'm not really prepared today to take it up. But I thank you, very, very thoughtful and good research.
Thank you very much. After last Thursday, when I think everyone, well, a lot of us expected us to have a very long discussion on Thursday, and we ended up having a very short discussion on Thursday, that, I kind of thought that's what we were going to do on Thursday, was to hash through some of this, but there wasn't the, the will to do that on Thursday. So certainly, there's no pressing need for us to decide on that tonight. You can digest my suggestions, come up with your own, share those with Barry, and maybe come back at a time certain with a, a menu of options for us. Sound good?
Sure.
All right. Moving on, item number 21. Mr. Administrator?
Item number 21 is a write-off of uncollectible receivable of $12,000.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Seale. Is there discussion? And Ms. Carpenter, I show no cards or memos for any other agenda item tonight.
That is correct. I don't have any other pre-registrations.
All right. Very good. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 22. Mr. Administrator?
So resolution, First Amendment to a joint agreement, interlocal agreement for the issuance and not to exceed $1.2 million for projects. This is an industrial revenue bond for a waste company.
Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Peters?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Long. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item number 23.
This approval of amendments to the Healthcare for Homeless Co-oplication Board bylaws and co-oplication agreements, basically through an audit that is coming up, we needed to make some modifications to these to be in compliance.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Gerard. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 24.
Item number 24 is an interlocal agreement with the City of Dunedin for the purchase of the Gladys Douglas property. As you're aware, the purchase of the price of the property was $10 million, $2 million provided by the city, $3.5 million provided by the county, with an assumption of 1.5 million of that coming back through a state community trust grant, and then 4.5 million through donations raised with, in partnership with local nonprofit entities.
Commissioner Gerard?
Yeah, this is not directly related to this vote, but I heard last night, or yesterday in a phone call about the West Klosterman Preserve, that the Florida Communities Trust Grants have been delayed, or that decisions on them have been delayed because the governor needed to make some more appointments to that board. Is that...
We, we've heard that, but again, we, we weren't expecting to even hear back the final ranking until July.
Oh, okay. I thought it was March.
But they usually meet in March, and then they, then they do a ranking, and then they don't make a final decision until July. So I think they do have time.
Okay.
Commissioner Seale?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept, but I have a few comments. I want to first of all thank the staff for all the heavy lifting and work that they did and the creativity. I think what Barry and the staff came up with sets the standard going forward as to how we value and how we pay for environmental and any other kind of land acquisition that we do. And I so appreciate the community coming forward to help fund this wonderful property, and I commend those for wanting to save this for future generations, and it's, it's just all come together just right. But that being said, I do have a couple of questions. So in Exhibit D, which lists the improvements that we included in the grant application, we are supposed to get, we ask for 2.4 million, and 1.5 million would come back to the county. What would the $900,000 be used for? Would they be used for our improvements that we have committed to?
Improvements on, yes, and well, improvements on the property. So we had committed to several things, but we, it could be for our improvements first or then other improvements.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because we talk about a nature center and, you know...
Most of, most of the things we committed to are things like...
Would they be used for our improvements that we have committed to?
Improvements on, yes, and well, improvements on the property. So we committed to several things, but we, it could be for our improvements first, or then other improvements.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because we talked about a nature center and, you know...
Most of, most of the things we committed to are things like, for the nature center, we were going to do that with our crews.
We were going to use what?
The outdoor recre, or nature center, we were going to use with our crews. We were going to do that with internal labor.
Okay.
It wouldn't be the things that we had to pay for, but...
Well, I just thought it looked like there was going to be a pretty big capital outlay, and I was just concerned about that.
Yeah, we, and we, we put a cap on the, the outlay, I think, did we remove that? Or that was, oh, we removed that. But, so we have, we have, we have a lot of flexibility regarding what we're committing to. Most of the things we committed to would be things we would do with our internal staff.
Okay. All right. Then the other question is, and you and I had this discussion, I recognize that Dunedin has some significant capital improvements that they need to do, including constructing a parking lot, but to see in the newspaper that this is not going to be open until 2023 or 2024 really bothers me. So if there's some way to be able to construct some, some way for the public to access this property sooner than that, I would really appreciate it, because I think that's, this is 2021, that's two to three years away, and that seems too long. Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
I just said I agree.
We have a motion from Commissioner Seal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Long. Further discussion? Anyone want to name it after Commissioner Eggers? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 25.
Make one other comment. Thank you to our staff. 181 pages in the grant application. Oh, my gosh.
Paul spent, and Jill spent a lot of time, a lot of other staff too, including our state's attorneys off, um, county, geez, our county attorney's office. Chelsea did an amazing job.
Lot of good work. Thank you very much.
Item number 25 is a First Amendment to an agreement with Bourn Tech. This is for upgrades to our Oracle Enterprise Resource System.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard. Second by Commissioner Long. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 26.
This is an appointment to the WorkNet Career Source Pinellas Board. This is an appointment of one School Board member seat.
Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Flowers. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 27.
This is, item number 27 is appointments to the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. This is appointment of the Pinellas Park Mayor as the Mayor's Council Representative, and Captain Eric Deanen as the City of St. Petersburg Fire Chief Alternate.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Gerard. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. 28, Mr. County Attorney.
Item 28 is proposed initiation of litigation in the case of Pinellas County Emergency Medical Services Authority versus AVMED Inc., DBA AVMED Health Plans, as an action for recovery of damages.
Motion by Commissioner Flowers, second by Commissioner Gerard. Discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item number 30, Mr. Administrator? I'm sorry, item 29, anything with redistricting?
Only that we're in the process of getting a consultant under contract right now, and the timeframe proposed by that consultant indicates probably late summer for appointments to the redistricting board, so as long as that's, all of that's subject to change if, ultimately, the census data comes out earlier than we anticipate, but given the information we have right now, that's what's anticipated.
Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that everyone that applied got notified that it's been delayed.
Yes.
Everyone that applied, I'm sorry.
For...
Oh, 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 for the, as far as I know, yes. I, I...
Yeah, an email went out. In fact, we have received a couple that, or at least one, I know, who has pulled their name from it.
Okay.
Two.
Thank you. Should we, are we going to open it up again, if people are removing themselves?
That's a decision.
It seems like we are coming.
I guess it's at the point when we're ready to appoint, we can make sure those folks still want to do it, and then if we need to go open up. Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator, item 30.
Nothing further.
Thanks, sir. Item 31. Commissioner Peters?
Yes, I want to appoint Keri Carlyle. Her son Connor is on the Youth Advisory Board. He's, I don't know if you've seen him, he's on the Parks Board as well, but he's in a wheelchair, he's wheelpark-bound, and has many, many medical issues, and I think she would be a perfect, perfect person. She's done statewide appointments on this kind of issue before, and she understands policies that are important for people with handicaps and disabilities, so I think she'd be an ideal, ideal, I can't speak highly enough about her.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Flowers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 32, reappointment to the Historic Preservation Board. We have a motion by Commissioner Seal, second by Commissioner Gerard. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show it passes unanimously. Item 33, any new business or commission reports? Commissioner Long?
Mr. Chair?
I just want to thank, I wanted to...
Microphone, please.
So sorry, I apologize. I wanted to share with you a letter that I want to suggest that the County Commission send to Secretary of Transportation at the federal level, and of course, now that I'm trying to find it, I can't, but I, I would like us to consider, I'll send it, I'll have Doyle send it all over to you, and I would like us to consider supporting the fact that we, you know, the county is applying for the bridge funds from the feds, and they, they have done that every year for the last four or five years. I don't know how many years we've done it, Barry can share, for the Dunedin Bridge. And PSTA is applying for it as well, for the Clearwater, Downtown Clearwater Multimodal Center. That said, the Downtown Clearwater Multimodal Center is on the MPO priority list. The Dunedin Bridge is not. Now Jill and Barry both shared with me this afternoon that it is in the TIF.
In the tip.
In the TIF, but in my debriefing with Whit Blanton last week, the fact that it's not on the MPO priority list, the feds will not give us that money, and as you know, it's very difficult to get federal funding from, from the federal, from the, to get federal money for anything in our region, and we have tried for the last several years to ensure that there was one application going up there for these dollars, speaking with one voice and one message, so it's a little bit conflicting for this, for us to be going after the same thing in my mind, and I, I would hope that, I'm going to, I just found it, so I'm going to send it to each one of you right now, so you can see it, and we can talk about it whenever we meet again, if that's appropriate, Mr. Chair. So I apologize, I didn't get it off to you this afternoon, you know, prior to the meeting.
Well, that, thank you for sending that. We have an MPO meeting tomorrow, and we were actually going to be discussing the list, so...
I know.
That's why... I'll be happy to bring it up tomorrow.
And, and we've actually...
Uh huh.
I'm going to be there too.
Okay.
Did you say the MPO?
Yeah, the MPO's tomorrow. Forward Pinellas is tomorrow, meeting.
Yeah. I forgot that you were still on it. I thought you had gotten on. I apologize, my brain has gotten a little foggy.
That's okay.
Yeah. That'll be good.
Anything else, Commissioner Long?
No, I'm sorry.
No? Thank you very much. Commissioner Seal?
Yes, I, I'm not sure who's attending the CNCN meeting on March the 15th virtually. Could, okay. I asked, I actually asked Jewel about this, because I, we were advised and that it's due to Sunshine Law, we have to be careful at this meeting. We are not allowed to attend virtually, remember? So therefore, we'll have to be careful with the comments that we make because of Sunshine Law. That being said, I understand, Kat, that you're going to, somebody's going to be taking minutes of it?
Yeah, we are sending a board reporter to the meeting in order to record the meeting, and we do take minutes just for the commissioner portion, not for the whole meeting.
Okay. So that'll be good. So at least we'll have a public record of what was said, so we appreciate that, but I just wanted to give you guys a cautionary note, and...
They have a 60 people signed up so far to go, but if it's not virtual, I won't be there, so...
I know.
It's one less commissioner for you to worry about.
So, and I, you know, in the past, when we've had meetings like this, we can go ahead, if we're in-person, we can go ahead and sunshine it from our end of things, but because this is a virtual meeting, that's what made the difference. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Can we just listen in, right?
Huh?
Sure.
We can just listen in?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Or, you know, if one person makes a statement, then let's not comment back and forth about it. We'll just, you know, your statement will be what it is. So unless you have anything further, Don, that you advise?
Well, I think that an abundance of caution would have been being done, was it was being noticed and being treated as a board meeting, so that it was a non-issue. That's why you can't attend virtually if it's going to be done that way. If you're just listening in and not participating in the board meeting portion of that, then it's a not, it's not a Sunshine Law issue, it's just like somebody else watching a virtual presentation elsewhere.
Okay. And then my other matter was, thank you to Aubrey Phillips for getting this emergency rental assistance program going, and I read the updates this morning. However, it does not mention who the vendor is, and I'm just curious, it was really some unusual people who responded to it, so don't need it now, but I would appreciate knowing who the vendor is.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Anybody else? I, and Commissioner Eggers left a couple of notes for me, including the CNCN, but we also, as a commission, want to extend our deep condolences to the family of Mayor Gary Cattica, who passed away this week. He was the longest-serving mayor in the history of Bel Air, over 20 years, and we send our sympathies to his wife, Mary, and son, and his grandsons, and express our sympathies to their family. We also want to express our sympathies to our neighbors across the bay, the loss of one of their officers, Tampa Master Patrol Officer Jesse Matson, who was killed in the line of duty, saving lives this past week. We extend our sympathies to the folks in Tampa, and it, of course, certainly brings the memory of our recent loss of our deputy, and to remind the public that the Sheriff's Office has a fund still set up at SunTrust Bank, if you want to make a contribution to his family, as well as our local PBA is selling T-shirts, and the profits and the proceeds go directly to his family as well, if you want to do so to support his family. With that, we are in recess until 6:00 p.m. ... at 6:00 PM for our public hearing. Item number 34, Ms. Carpenter.
Agenda item number 34 is case number CW 21-04. It's a proposal by the City of Largo to amend the countywide plan map from public semi-public to office regarding 7.39 acres more or less located at 6021 142nd Avenue North. The public hearing was properly advertised. An affidavit of publication has been received or filing. No correspondence has been received. The matter is properly before the authority to be heard.
The City of Largo is the applicant. Are there questions from the commissioners? Is there testimony from the public? I have no cards. Seeing, I assume the city is here to answer questions, but doesn't need to present?
No.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Motion by Commissioner Gerard, second by Commissioner Flowers. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, show it passes unanimously. Mr. Administrator, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned.